Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen Meeting, Monday, August 10. Call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. In this meeting, using GoToWebinar, audio/video conferencing software pursuant to Governor's Order for Open Meeting requirements. All content in this meeting will be recorded. Connect to audio-only and a listen-only mode via phone or via online app or mobile device or computer. In a participative mode where we can take questions or can ask in person. There's a raise-your-hand option or a question box. Feel free to put questions in there. We'll attempt to take any questions we can. Depending on time and all questions become part of the record. All right. Without further ado, quick little lengthy agenda this evening. I believe Acting Chief Holst is with us, so we'll jump to that item, Section 10. Discussion with him, welcome. I guess I'll just start. I wanted to meet with you since making that temporary appointment. Thank you for taking on that, those duties for us at this time. And just kind of, I know some of the things, the board probably has some questions, but one of the first things is just, you know, is everything, how's everything going? Is everyone up to speed in the department? And, you know, staffing schedule-wise, you know, what's your outlook currently in the short time that you've been Acting Chief?
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. Yes, things are going very well. We're only six days into it, but we are going well. We were faced with some scheduling issues immediately. And I have to applaud all the patrolmen. They stepped up tremendously. And they pulled together a schedule for the rest of August. And they also were able to pull together a schedule for September. And they did that with about a day and a half notice, so I give them a tremendous amount of credit for that. Some of them, most of them were off while they were doing this, and even one officer was on vacation, so they really stepped up. So yes, August is all set. Staffing will continue as is, 24-hour coverage. And then in September, again, we will have 24-hour coverage like we have had for the past several years. We will have a few shifts where maybe we were used to having two officers on, where we will now only have one officer on and not as much double coverage, but we will still have 24-hour coverage.
Excellent. Bill, Pete, any questions?
Yeah, Sergeant Holtz, this is Bill Bembry. Could you, could you put, if you haven't already, could you put that schedule in the list of officers? Dates and times of the shifts and give that to the administrative coordinator for us to at least have that information if we get calls and what have you.
Absolutely, Mr. Bembry. I did already show Town Administrator, Mr. Smith, a copy of the schedule. And so, yes, I can definitely provide him with the remaining August and September.
Okay, thank you.
I am anticipating a few vacation requests for September. So I can, I can get the September schedule to, to anybody as it stands right now, or I can just wait and see what the requests are going to be. If, if you guys could give me a couple of days for those requests, or I can just update the calendar once it's, once it changes.
That'll work for me.
So Bill, you want to have August for now, and then once September's finalized, we'll just wait and get a copy there?
That's fine.
Okay.
I only have one other question and, and and that would be the Police Academy that, that was coming up in the fall. Is that something that you're already on top of or looking at?
Mr. Bembry, the officer that was slated to attend that academy has been notified that he will not be attending it. The seats filled up fairly quickly. We are anticipating on getting him in the next available academy. We currently have already taken the steps that are necessary to be ahead of the curveball, where he has his PT, his physical done already, which is good for an unlimited amount of time. And so, once the academy gets posted, we'll get him in for a physical agility test, and then he'll be, he'll be ready to go. But he has been notified that that is on hold until there is an academy available.
Okay, thank you. My, I guess my second to that is, did, did we not set Fall Academy up so that she fell within a certain time limit? Brian?
You're asking about the 270-day waiver?
Right.
We're still, I had previously discussed the situation with Chief Blair. We're still within that, that window.
Okay.
Yep. So as long as we can get him into the Spring Academy and into Acting Chief Holst's point, the COVID-19 restrictions had severely reduced the enrollment class for the Fall Academy. So, so it wasn't that we weren't ready, and it wasn't that the officer hadn't prepared, but we simply just, there were too many people who needed it and not enough seats. So everything's been done to get our application ready to go so that we can be hopefully one of the first to apply for the next one.
Okay, thank you.
Pete, did you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, well, I think the board had talked about having some regular check-in with you, so as we kind of pencil it into the agenda, we'll keep you posted, and we'd like you to join us and just give us an update on anything. And obviously, you know, our door is open, any of us, and any, you know, anything comes up, any questions, you need any support from the board through this time, let us know.
Thank you, gentlemen. I definitely will be doing that.
All right. Well, thanks for stepping up and taking this on in short notice and we'll stay in touch, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Trying not to jump around too much tonight, but probably going to be hard. A few minutes, I'll go back to the top. Any, any new updates regarding COVID-19? I think there's been a reduction in the gathering allowance at the state level.
Slight reduction in the gathering and a pause on progressing to the next phases. So we, we are starting to see an uptick in cases that was, was concerning enough to the governor's staff to pause. But we are, we're not necessarily going backwards, other than, as you noted, there's some reduction in gathering sizes. But, but we're not closing facilities, and we're not closing establishments. We're not reducing the occupancy in offices. But it's definitely a pause, so we're not going to move quite quickly into the next phase yet. I think we were preparing to go into Part II of Phase III. So that's on, on hold. But we're watching that along with the, the health staff. So other than that, I don't currently have a, another update on COVID-19, other than you all were aware from our last update that the school is actively working on their reopening plans. They've been doing town halls with the, with the parents and with their staff. So I know that those plans are ongoing. That was about two weeks ago that they started that process publicly. And that, that work is continuing, and we have more inventory coming in. Hand sanitizer, the dispensers, all the sanitizing wipes, all the PPE. So we're stocking up for now and what we think we're going to need through the fall. Because those supply chains are still disrupted.
Okay. Any questions or concerns around concerns, probably not the right word, any other discussion around COVID-19, the board?
All set.
All set.
I don't believe there's any update around library construction or change orders at this time.
No, we're still working out that, that list that you all reviewed with the Building Committee at your last meeting.
Okay. IP Mill Hazardous Waste Cleanup Project update?
They are actively shutting the site. I believe the final pieces of equipment and and signs of mobilization have, have left as of the end of last week. We have a few more things to do in terms of a walkthrough with the vendor and with our engineers on the project, just to make sure that the interior of the building is exactly the way we need it. And then to change back over all our locks and things of that nature. So Glenn and I will be working with the team and Mariah on that. And then they are actively putting together all the close-up paperwork that we're going to need to demonstrate to mass development that the work's been done, to update that hazardous materials inventory list that we discussed. And, and to make sure that we're ready for the next phase of this project. So all of that should be tidied up in the next two weeks.
Excellent. We'll come back to the sledge dryer capital project alone application shortly. EV charging station ground tape?
Mariah's on. I will ask her to know where we stand with those vendors.
Hi. So I have heard back from two out of the three vendors that I originally reached out to. But only one of them gave me an itemized quote. So, but we need that to be able to go to the Green Communities Coordinator and ask for a specific amount of money. So I'm waiting to hear back from the second vendor who I've been in touch with to see if they can still get me an itemized quote. They gave me a quote, but it was one lump sum, and it doesn't actually show how much National Grid would cover and how much green communities would cover. So once I get that, I actually reached out to Mark Grabinski from Green Communities Today, asking if he wants me to wait to put in my request until I get both of those, or if I should put in a request for the Green Communities funding now. So really, we're still in limbo, and in the next couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll have an answer. And I think the last time we talked, we told you, in case we didn't, the Green Communities funding will only cover two of the charging stations, and we had talked about how we wanted three. So we just said, I think that we would still probably do the three, but we would just pay for the that one extra charger.
Okay. What is the deadline on that again? Is it end of the month?
We already got our application in, so I think we're, we're good as long as, you know, we keep moving on. It's just that the Green Communities funding should be used up in January by January. So we do want to keep it moving, but there's no real deadline from now on.
Okay. Other questions?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mariah. River Warner Stratchton Street Project Update. See, they've mobilized.
Glenn's not on with us yet, so he may be available to give you a little more detailed information when he joins you in a little bit. They absolutely have mobilized. One day, they started the construction work, so they've been working on altering structures. And they've been working with our engineer to assess what we need to do at River Street. We had talked about needing to do some alterations with the elevation by the intersection. So they're working together to do a proposed change order for you. So we have all that work going on right now. But yeah, at this point, residents have received the communication, or all the property owners, I should say, about all the contact information for the engineers and the contractor. And the engineers have been doing site monitoring, and the contractor has left a fairly clean site, which is what we're always looking for. So, so far, things seem to be on an okay start.
Glenn did mention that Friday, so setting the catch basins. So that's the stage that they were at Friday, and I think Glenn and I are both going to stop by at some point tomorrow or Wednesday to just check in.
Excellent. Once he's on later, we can ask him if he has anything to add, but it's a good, good update in general. Good to see that moving so quickly.
It, I don't want to jinx it, but we have a 100-day construction period in the contract. And the vendor is, is thinking that that is many more days than, than are necessary. So it's possible that, we thought this would be a three-month project, and it's possible he may be able to do it much quicker than that. So.
I see you're here, Glenn. So if you had more to add, or you want to add anything, feel free. Otherwise,
There he is.
Come back to it. Did the board have any questions?
No.
All right. Review of network and server, virtual server resiliency project procurement.
To where do?
We put the draft document out last meeting. If everyone had a chance to review it some more, had any questions, comments?
I went back and I included the CMR that you referenced, Mr. Chairman. So that's in your packet. It's pretty comprehensive. The Massachusetts regulation on this, in terms of what we need to do for, it's not just electronic files, but in general, when you're handling this type of personal information. And so I did a little bit of research. And it, there is a federal-level guidance document, but it's only required for federal and executive agencies. So we can choose to hold ourselves to that standard if we wanted to, GovCloud. But it appears that as long as we are in compliance with the state regulation, we've met our, our burden. So I revised that draft scope with a requirement to be in compliance with that CMR. If you feel that that's sufficient, I think we're probably in good stead. I added the CGIS piece in there because of the Police Department's information. HIPAA, even though there are pieces of HIPAA that are related to the information that we keep on employees and we keep in, in terms of students, I'm not sure that that's as relevant. It's more for healthcare providers. And I think that the, the CMR addresses that, those topics as well.
I would say I believe that that would be sufficient to call those out. We may want to say, you know, for the pertinent data, you know, the data that falls under those guidances, because it's not necessarily everything that we have, maybe just to quantify that, that would need to be compliant for the, for the information stored that, you know, is, that falls under those guidances. And at that point, I think we can probably take the migration from commercial to GovCloud off. And that can be a determination of that compliance, as opposed to a strict task, I think. I mean, I don't know, that, that's kind of, I think, what you're leaning toward.
I, I've yet to find anything in the Massachusetts regulations that say we have to be on that GovCloud. It does talk about benefits of GovCloud, and I think the federal program is called FedRAMP. They've been working on to get all the executive agencies, so it's best, it's considered best practice, and it's, it's something to aspire to if we wanted to. I will say that from my understanding of our peers, I don't think our peers are doing this, so we shouldn't, but I don't know that we need to, to burden ourselves with that at this moment.
And for the, for the group's benefit, that doing this migration may make our systems more secure. There would be, you know, basically, the real short version of what I understand of GovCloud versus Commercial Cloud, physically segregated servers from their commercial products from Microsoft, domestic only, so it's located somewhere in the United States. It's as a level of access, security attached to it for Microsoft personnel who have access to that, that segmented cloud. So it's all about protecting information, keeping it, you know, stateside, that kind of thing. There's some limitations. They don't roll out features as quickly. There's some, you know, things that they don't ever roll out to that portion of their offering because of the government restrictions. So it has some cons to it as well. And probably the biggest discrete con right now would be ideally doing it now that versus later is an advantage if it needs to get done. However, there's a significant cost to that migration, not that it won't be more later, but if we don't need to do it to bear that cost, which from, I've heard numbers from $10,000 to $20,000, $30,000 to do that migration just by itself, so. It just bears the question, if it doesn't need to be done, then we can meet the necessary requirements and good practices without doing it, then that may not be money well spent.
Just one thing to, to add, I have a meeting set up with, for CAG next week. And apparently, the city of Pittsfield has been offering a service like what we've been talking about creating for Franklin County. Right? This is, and Pittsfield's been offering this through their IT department to some of the smaller Berkshire county towns. And so we've all been talking about what a structure should look like or what it could look like. This would be an example to speak to somebody who's actually running a structure that small towns are benefiting from. And so we can get more of an application, understanding of what it, what it looks like on the ground. So I'll have that information to bring back next week.
That'd be great. I'd be curious what they're doing. If they're using the Microsoft Suite, then are they in cloud-based? You know, what, what are they on and what are they offering?
Okay.
Did we get a chance to talk to the solution provider that's been working with FERCOG in regards to where they sit with GovCloud, Commercial Cloud, that kind of stuff, with their other CAG relationships?
I have not had a chance to get that back from them, but I will do that this week.
Jake, I have a question. The, the virtual server/cybersecurity program that, that this is all about, is it going to cover like all areas of, of town government as far as the pressure? Like, as an example, the Treasurer's Office, Tax Office, and where sensitive materials are, such as SS numbers and, and things like that, that, that people might want to try to get in and alter that system or have funds come to them as opposed to somewhere else?
The short answer is yes. Generally, the idea would be replace the physical server that exists at Town Hall with this solution. So migrating away from that physical onsite hardware into a cloud offering. So anything that's currently being stored electronically from those offices is part of this migration. And then I think we probably will see, as time passes, you know, more and more records and information being digitized, you know, and being used in a digital format. So I think this is also building that platform for any future information of those sorts that will, will be added later. One exception would be the school. The school has their own system and is handling it in in similar ways in some areas, but they're handling their, their network and their information separately from this project. But this covers, everything in Town Hall would cover all of the other departments, all of the email system for all the boards, committees, employees, et cetera. It's pretty comprehensive, you know, all the departments.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Any other questions at this time? It sounds like we still got some questions and some pieces of information to bring back and see how they shape what we read up for the MOU. Or the, I'm sorry, the, the statement of work. No other questions on that topic? It is 6:30 PM, so we will call the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order at 6:30 PM. Welcome. I think we have most members here, who at least have a quorum of
Correct.
All three groups. First topic, and we're going to continue to talk, but primary topic for 6:30 is the sledge dryer capital project. And I know we have one thousand here from Ursico and to help talk through this, I talked a little bit with FinCom and Capital Planning about what this project's about, but continuing to develop and evolve, and details get ironed out. So I wanted everybody, everyone to be here to hear it and ask questions as they see fit. So we had some documents that came out this afternoon related to the project. And Morris, I don't know if you have a specific way, or Brian, that you want to start this discussion or dive in?
Um, well, I, I'm curious. I mean, I'll just, I'll kick it off. Thank you for having us. Thank you for giving us your time and attention. Mike McCullough, I'm not sure if Mike's on. He's hoping to make it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hey, Mike.
Hi, Boris.
I only have a limited and I'm hoping everybody had a chance to read some of the, some of the documents or all of the documents that we sent ahead of time. That is, obviously, that's work by Tie &amp; Bond for an engineering firm that is well-respected and well-known by you folks, as well as, as us. They've done an awful lot of work on our wastewater treatment plant. And they have presented, I'm going to, I'm going to hand it back to Brian in a minute, just to see, make sure we do this, how he wants it done. But I think the big elephant in the room that we want to talk about, I imagine the Finance Committee is going to be most interested in. It's a pretty heavy price tag for a a sludge dryer that we're looking at for Ursico. But I want to be very clear, it, it's a big number to us as well, but it was developed by Tie &amp; Bond with, with, it is their, it is their engineer's opinion, so they didn't spend too many hours of engineering time drilling down, literally and figuratively. We do have a lot of underground piping and a lot of underground work. Some of you probably know more about that than I do, underneath the tar, so installing a heavy piece of equipment like this is going to take an awful lot of work underground. It's not obvious. And the equipment itself is not inexpensive. I've got some bullet point notes. I don't know if you really, if you all want to walk through this line by line, which we could do. But the, if we start at the bottom, you'll see a price tag of, I believe it's about almost $18 million, and that's one eight, eighteen. There's a 20% contingency in there, about $3 million, and then about another $2 million for a contractor for the installation. So and I want, I'm just going to sort of tee this up. Like I said, it was jaw-dropping when we first saw it, but at the same time, Tie &amp; Bond walked us through it. I think it's, and I want to be careful. I don't want to try to play it down at all. It's an engineering, you know, they're, they were, they put their thought into this. And they see it as a, as an $18 million project. Of course, we're going to do everything we can to try to shape some dollars off and so on. But sort of with that, if that's enough to go on, can I sort of hand it back to Brian? Is that enough of a tee-up, or should you want me to go a different direction?
I think that starts the conversation. Folks are generally aware of this proposed project. But maybe we should at least explain the proposed equipment that would be installed. Equipment that would be installed. And the goal, really quick reminder of of what this project is is being proposed.
Okay. So I think everybody's aware that Casella Organics is the company that hauls away our. We make about fifty thousand tons a year, we've been a little bit, we've been a little bit dryer, so probably forty five thousand tons. A year of sludge, and it's about forty five percent moisture. Obviously, we do, and I think you're aware, it's about a million seven a year in cost for hauling that away. In addition, this is a type two DEP type two. Product. Casella has indicated to us that there's not a lot of space left for type two material. They're strongly urging us to move to a type one product, which would be a ninety percent dry product. So that's really the drive, that is the ultimate driving force behind this project is that Casella is telling us. You need to get to a type one product. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to help you anymore, so there's a certain amount of existentialism to it. So, so there's pressure on us, and we've even received a notice from them that next July, July of twenty twenty one. They think that sort of they've drawn a line in the sand, they're not going to stop helping us, but they're, they think that's about the the end of the line for type two material. So we're in a bit of a rush to get something installed to move to a type one material, which is much easier to permit. Lot more land application opportunities, and. It goes from forty five, fifty thousand tons of material down to about twenty thousand tons of material. So there is a savings in the haul costs, but those are going to be offset by bringing a natural gas line over to Ursico with your permission. And we got to bring some electricity over there as well, and so the cost of the gas and the electric are going to offset. Some of the haul savings, the hauling savings. But what's driving this, as Brian asked me to point out, is we need to shift to a type one product. In order to land apply our material in the, in the very near term. And so that's where we're headed, we did, I guess I'll keep going a little bit more, we engaged tie and bond. To do a full analysis on available technology, drying technologies, and there is a document that we sent to you. I think it probably includes twelve to fifteen. Different companies and styles of drawing. We are not fully decided, but we are leaning to what we've sent you this evening is information on the. The belt dryer. And we're strongly leaning that way, but we haven't made the final, final, final decision yet. The reason we like it is we think it at a low temperature. It should operate with fewer fire, high temperature rotary drum, there's a risk of fire, or not, not really a risk, but when are you going to have your first fire? And not that that's something we're not. Entirely uncomfortable with, but we'd like to avoid that. And you can also imagine high temperatures lead to expensive and challenging operating issues and operating costs. In fact, additional labor, higher labor and higher operational costs are necessary for the rotary dryer. But its capital cost is lower. Slightly, so that's a little interesting. The belt dryer, which we've shown you here by Griffin, he's been a guy named Ted Griffin has invented this, he's an engineer. Put this, designed this product primarily for drying paper mill sludge. It's, it's a straightforward dryer and at a low temperature. I'm going to bring up the, 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 the word that shall not be spoken is PFAS. We don't know, and I'm not trying to create trouble, but certainly. We could imagine that at a high temperature drying, you know, at nine hundred degrees drying. There's a chance that. PFAS becomes, and I'm no, I'm no chemist and I'm not an engineer, but even from a layperson's perspective, I could imagine it might. Waken PFAS sleeping giant in the biosolids. At a much lower temperature, the Griffin dryer. It's not a definite, but it's far less likely that we will. Be separating PFAS from the biosolids, now of course that says. Well, then that just leaves the PFAS and the biosols, and we're happy to talk about PFAS, I'm not happy, but we're willing to. And we do have, I don't want to hijack the the current conversation, this is a sludge drying project. Which just is not about reducing or eliminating PFAS, this is only about drying the sludge. But I'm happy to talk about PFAS as a, as an ancillary concept. The project we need to do, the price is high, we understand we're asking the town for, it's a very big ask. But at this, other than we're hoping to, you know, cut a, cut a few hundred thousand dollars here and more money there and. And we're obviously going to do this at the least expensive, most efficacious way we can. At the moment, tie and bond has presented us with eighteen million dollar price tag in order to dry our sludge. So. With that, I will take questions, Michael, Mike McCullough, did I miss anything, did I misstate anything?
No, you've, you've covered everything from top to bottom there, Morris.
Okay.
Just, I'll just chime in with the first thing, just for the group, you know, some are familiar, some probably aren't, just. And it can, it can be a lengthy conversation, the real short version, what is PFAS or what does it stand for and what's? You know, the thirty second version for the group.
From me, so PFAS is making headlines these days. It's found its way into, it's what's, it's what goes into Teflon for your. Non-stick coating pots and pans, it's found in Scotch guard, that aerosol spray that you put on your couches. It keeps, it's been around since the nineteen fifties, it keeps oil and and water stains away from everything, any of your. Clothing that has any. You know, whether. Weather or water protection coated in PFAS. There was, we all have PFAS in our bodies. There was an article last week that most fast food burger wrap. Has PFAS in it, because you get your Big Mac, tastes delicious, but you don't want it staining your your slacks while you're eating it. So they take that otherwise innocent paper product and bathe it in PFAS to keep the grease off your slacks. So it is ubiquitous, this PFAS is everywhere, and this is my spiel on PFAS. So we don't generate any PFAS, the paper mill receives and sadly agglomerates PFAS. We know that it comes in through the commercial septicage, and some of you may know that we've taken a break. From the commercial septicage because we wanted to find out how much PFAS was in there, and we've got some test results, but we're not really ready to. There's definitely PFAS in there, but we would like to have a couple more months of data before we sort of say it in publicly, but there are certainly, there's PFAS in the septicage. There is likely, we have not tested, but we imagine there's probably PFAS in the town septicage, there's PFAS in most septicage around the Commonwealth. We also just learned that there we tested a couple of gallons of Miller's River water coming into the mill. That's PFAS in it. We've also looked at our, our number one raw material, as some of you know, is office waste. So we sent about a dozen samples from different suppliers and different types of of office waste and wastepaper. To maybe we can isolate and find out where the PFAS is coming from. And again, without solving the PFAS problem on this phone call, we are. It appears as though finding the sources of the PFAS and eliminating it is our best bet. At the same time. We know that a lot of the folks that dropped their septicage off at at Ursico. We stopped doing that for a couple of months for testing purposes, but these truckers have nowhere to go, nowhere. And I guess they can go to Springfield for twice the price. But I'm not sure that. And this, the DEP is in a, in a very difficult situation because, because this PFAS is everywhere, probably in everybody's well water. They're trying to protect people from it, but it's, but it's everywhere, so. You know, my pitch, I'm sort of playing a little bit of a victim with the DEP, so listen, we're at least you doing you a favor by agglomerating it. And if you're looking for PFAS, we've got it all right here for you, so you can control it. Otherwise, if paper mill says, we're not taking septicage anymore, we're not going to, that office waste, we can't use it anymore because it has PFAS. The Miller's River is another story, but the DEP is still going to have a PFAS problem, they're just not going to know where it is. So again, I'm not trying to solve the PFAS problem, but letting you know, we're on the receiving end of this material, and it's. Becoming our challenge, so that's the PFAS, it's ending up in the, to finish this, it's ending up in the sludge. And right now, we'd see it's sticking with the biomass. And a question that has come up is gee, if you dry the material and separate the water, will the PFAS become more concentrated? In the remaining material, and the unfortunate, the answer is no, that's not, sort of, that's not the way it works. And so we're not creating. We're not by any means creating more of a problem by drying the sludge, so I wanted to answer that question before it was asked. So is that, did that, was that helpful?
So.
A little scary?
What, what I, Mr. Housen, when I, I read, I thought I read in Tyne Bonds' report was that. DEP currently doesn't regulate PFAS. But may.
That's correct.
Happen in the future and and try to regulate it or. Put some limits on. On materials that that have PFAS. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
That is correct, which almost makes it more challenging because there are beyond that bill, there's not even a testing methodology. That's been accepted. And you're right, there are, at this, there are no limits. And for what it's worth, there are some organizations out there who are believers in in biosolids, and the work that we do. On with our land application material is very well received in the farming community, they like our stuff. And so. I mean, I hate to say there. Maybe there's room for a little bit of PFAS in that material, that's not my, that's not our decision to make, but you're right, there are no regulations at this point.
Thank you, it's something at least for us to start thinking about. Back to the, kind of the bigger, the project at hand. You know, part of this is to see the latest numbers and and talk through the latest, you know, design plans, or as preliminary as they are. You know, ultimately, a big part of this is. Supporting it happening under the license, but also helping to with funding mechanisms that the town may be eligible for that Ursco would not on their own. So. You know, with the capital planning and finance here to talk through that, I kind of focus a little bit more on that, questions around that. There's a bit of discussion later as well about another opportunity for funding that we need to make a decision if we would pursue. Or want to support pursuing, that could help fund this project as well, so. Kind of back to that topic, anyone has any questions or? I think I see your hand, Dan, go, go ahead, I can't quite tell.
I hope you can hear me somehow, I've disconnected my keyboard, it only goes click, 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 I don't know what the deal is with that, but. If you're getting, thanks for bearing with me. Just for everybody listening, what is the, what is the ask of the town, that participate in the borrowing perhaps kind of thing? And I have to click off about five minutes to seven and come back in about ten minutes, so sometimes I have to do, but. Also, is there any conceptual thought of how big this building would be or where it would be roughly, those are a couple of questions that I had.
So. Morris, if you want to take that?
I'll talk about the building size, we're not exactly sure if we're going to need two dryers or three dryers, they, they, they work in succession. We think, we're hoping, the information that you has is three dryers, we're hoping that we can do it with two. And we're looking about, we're looking at having room, some room in the existing building. For a dryer, a dryer and a half, it'd have to be added on. But there's not, there's not an awful lot of real estate over there, so whatever we come up with has to go exactly. With a, with a little bit of addition, we're, we're, we're inside the building that we have now.
Thank you.
And as far as, Morris, go ahead about, or Brian, as far as the ask.
So, so Dan, to the financing question, tonight's question is whether or not. FinCom and the board would be supportive of us submitting an application. To the Cleanwater Trust Fund, it's a, it's a program that only takes applications once a year. And that deadline is coming up on August twenty first, so we're nearing our deadline. We have enough preliminary information on this, this project concept to submit that application. The, the process doesn't stop there, by October, we would need to bring this to town meeting, and we would have to seek authorization from the voters to make sure that they're willing. To allow us to go forward, so the hope would be that after this application submitted to at least get us considered. We would be able to finalize the proposal with Irving Industries and Ursico. So that we can plan for town meeting in late September, early October. And have these conversations with citizens, make sure that they understand the proposal, address any of their questions and concerns, and to see if they would be willing to let us go forward. We wouldn't know until January, end of January, whether or not we were accepted into the process. The attractiveness of this is to secure the debt service at an interest rate of two percent. Approximately. With the potential for some loan forgiveness, if the state found our project to be eligible. So, so those are the attractive qualities to doing this group financing. Can apply with, out the town on this.
Well, that answers the question for me, and even I'll return as soon as I can, but before I go, from a financial point of view for the town. Little cost to the town, if any. Most of the costs, nearly all is borne by the mill. And there is cost to the town, if the mill has no place to put their sludge, they, we would need to find a place to treat our own sewer, if the mill had to. You know, not exist because there's no place to put this sludge. Or the cost is so prohibitive, they can't, can't continue on business, so from a financial point of view, since there are many branches to this tree. That really need to be climbed before we get to a final answer. I would move for the finance committee that we support. Filing this application, not miss that August twenty first deadline, and I would move that we do that if there's anyone on the finance who would second it.
I saw the couple of questions first, if you don't mind.
Before you ask.
So this.
One more thing I wanted to add, if I'm correct, I believe the length of term on the financing is also potentially more advantageous than could be done outside of of this. Is it up to twenty or up to thirty years, Brian?
Twenty to thirty years.
At that low rate, so that's another piece of that. For the group. Thank, thank you, Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no problem at all, just, just wondering what happens if this, is it a grant that you're talking about, Brian, that we'd be going for in January?
This is a. Water Trust Fund is a financial program through the state that makes money available to municipalities and public private partnerships like what we have here. Specifically for wastewater and water system improvements, so it's a very specific use, this would. But there are. Beyond the attractive financing and the term like Jake just described, there is the opportunity to have some of this forgiven. I don't know if this project will meet all of those conditions, it's definitely something that we'd be hopeful for.
What if we don't get the grant?
So.
Just to clarify, it's not a grant, it's a loan, there's a price of two percent.
What if we don't?
That's an excellent question.
What if we don't get the?
We're back to the project still being proposed and us having. If we're back to the project still being proposed and us having to try to figure out if there's another conventional borrowing method that would make sense. Um, I don't know that, that I can think of one that the town is readily available for. Um, so we'd have to probably go back to the, the drawing board with, with, uh, Morris and his team to see what our options are. Uh, we'd have to pull in the treasurer's financial advisor to see what options, uh, Unibank thinks exists for the municipality. We've had preliminary, Mariah and myself have had preliminary meetings with the EP about this project. And in general, they were encouraging of a proposal, uh, to be submitted. Uh, this was a project that seemed right up the alley for this, this intended project, uh, program. So, so it doesn't seem to be a, a concern that we wouldn't be competitive enough. I think the only concern that exists is how many other applications coming in? Is there enough funding to make loans for all of them? Um, is this price tag beyond the reach? I know we had that conversation today with the team at Tyne Bond. And they've seen projects of all sizes and they sort of classified this project to be somewhere middle of the road in terms of size and scope and cost. Um, obviously, as you towards the metro area, these, these projects exponentially increase in cost.
So Dan, your, um, your motion was to, uh, was the paperwork, put this in front of the town in September?
Yeah, my motion is to sup, for the finance committee to support filing this application. There looks like there's at least about four or five other places along the way where we may or may not be successful and the town, the house people get to have input and vote what they want to do. Um, but without having this application filed, the thing goes nowhere. And the mill may go somewhere, which we don't want to have happen. So my motion, we, the finance committee support filing the application. Plenty of time even for us to weigh in later on and whether we like the project or not.
That's a very good point, Dan.
Yep. Uh, I'll second that. Is there anyone else on the finance committee that would like to say anything about it?
Hi, this is Deb. I have a quick question. Um, once this project gets going, if for some reason it is found that it is, comes in higher than that $18 million price tag, where does that additional funding come from?
Uh, God, I hope it doesn't come in higher. Um, there is a, um, a 20% contingency. So I think there's some conservatism there, but not to beat around the bush. Irving Paper Mills is, you know, gonna have to, we'll, we'll pony up as best we can. Um, you know, COVID is playing a role here in terms of operating expenses and, uh, believe, you know, waste paper. But I, 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 I can't give you a, I, I'd love to be able to say Irving Paper Mills can afford the, uh, the, any amount above that, but I guess it depends how much more it's gonna be. Um, so I, you know, I, it's, it's a hard question to answer, I guess.
But then we, we also know that we're pretty sure we can do it with two dryers and not three.
Right.
So we were confident we can commit under.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah, so at the risk of whittling away the tie-in bond quote, um, Mike's point is well taken. So right in, you'll see it's the $6 million, uh, expense line. It's, um, I'm not sure which, which line it is, but it's $6 million for three dryers. We're pretty confident we're gonna get away with two dryers for $4 million. Um, so there's that. And there are a couple of things we've already picked at. But again, I want to, I don't want to erode the tie-in bond, uh, opinion. Um, but I promise you, we will be going through this with a fine tooth comb and we will get this to be the least expensive, uh, uh, dryer, uh, solution that's, uh, that's ever been installed.
Um, Brian, Brian, uh, I spoke to Brian a couple of days ago and he said there was a second option um, to the, uh, possible option to the, uh, Clean Water Trust Fund. Um, Brian, are you prepared to give us that second option?
I know Mariah is gonna want to discuss that with you all when we get to the IP mail. But yes, I can bring it up and we'll discuss it again on the other end too. Um, Raya has been doing some research and some, some work with the county planning agency. And, um, also, uh, in, in relation to the COVID relief money that's come out from the federal government, there are, um, programs to help invest in infrastructures, again, specifically public and private partnerships. Um, they wanna see a public-private partnership, oh, it's focused on job retention or increases. Um, they, they wanna see infrastructure investments, things of that nature are much more advantageous for the funding, uh, than not. So it would be through the federal EDA. Um, if we could apply for this funding, if we were to be successful, which I think we've got some of the boxes checked off already. Um, the grant could be, as, and this would be a grant to, to Ben's, uh, question earlier. Uh, this could be a grant as of, as much as 80% of the project cost. We would have to find a 20, at minimum, a 20% non-federal match. So that could be financing, that could be another loan service, be some other source. It just can't be federal. So 80 would be the high side. I don't know, I can guarantee you that it would be 80. It's obviously competitive. The one thing to keep in mind is this does not have a firm timeline. Um, they are accepting rolling applications right now, but they're accepting rolling applications countrywide. So, um, our thought was to focus on this application so that we at least have put our foot in the door for this fed, the state funding through the Clean Water Trust Fund. So that we have that application at least going through the motions. And then if there was enough support from the board and FinCom to submit a grant application to the EDA program, that may be a Plan B. Um, only, the only thing to, um, consider, and again, we'll discuss it when we get to the IP mill, we can only put in for one project. So putting in for this, and this is probably the, the further developed project and it probably, from a strategic standpoint, makes the most sense. We would have to forego putting in an application for the IP mill at this time. So definitely a trade-off.
Is there anything else from?
So just, I, I, I have to go. This, this particular application has a time sensitive thing to it. So I'm hoping we could vote before I leave the meeting. Um, and I'll come back, but I, I'm late to the other one.
Yeah. Um, all those in favor, FinCom?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Was that three ayes?
All those are, yep. All those opposed?
I think it was four in favor.
Yeah.
That's what I.
Thank you, Charlie.
I heard Charlie and Deb, uh, Bennett and I.
Sometimes I get an echo on this thing. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you. And Morris, I'll get back, I'll see.
Uh, can't hear you, Dan.
Oh, um, can you hear me okay now? No?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. If you're here when I get back, I'll see you again. If not, it's good to see you again. Okay, thank you.
Always a pleasure. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, folks.
Ben, did you have a question?
Nope.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Back to the, and, and I absolutely hope the project goes down, not up, but the money question. When we, if we file the Clean Water Trust and the estimate changes, is that able to be modified or is it set to where, whatever we submit on the 21st max?
It's my understanding that we just. So as long as we can work within the number that we submit or less, we should be fine, but we can't, we can't revise and go up.
Okay.
And Tyne Bond took that into consideration.
Okay. So you, and you may know Tyne Bond, we've engaged them to, to process the application. They have experience. I'm sort of a, I'm happy and sad. They've got apparently three or four other projects they're also submitting. I just hope they put this one at the top of the pile, but they're, they're in this business of, of filling out these applications. And, um, and I've, I've talked to people, they're successful at these applications. We're also, uh, this, we're talking to our DEP connections and, and they're excited about this. And it, 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 it's, it's a good project. It's an expensive project, but to go from a type two product to type one, the DEP likes to see this forward movement. They would love to see us solve the PFAS problem, but that's, that'll be phase two. It's further down the road.
The, uh, EDA option, Brian, uh, the, the 20% match, since they're encouraging public-private partnerships, does that match? I, I'm assuming they're open to that match coming from public or private funding?
Correct. Yep. And I, I don't know all the details of how you, the two entities here got into this relationship back in the 1970s, but it was somewhere around a project like this. Money came from the federal government for infrastructure specifically targeted towards wastewater facilities. Public entities could apply if they had a public, public or public and private partnership like you all had, and that's where this all came from. So it's actually a very similar funding opportunity to what you all did in 1970s.
Right.
Um, Brian, uh, just a short, small question, uh, ED, EDA, what does that stand for?
Should have known that you were gonna ask that question. Give me one moment. That's a fair question.
We should have known. Mike McCullough, did you?
It's the Economic Development, um, Administration. And the grant is the EAA Economic Adjustment Assistance Program.
Thank you.
A save.
Love our acronyms, don't we?
So is it, is it possible that we can, um, um, do both of these at the same time?
Yep. Wha, what I would recommend to you all is that we put in the application for the Clean Water Trust Fund to at least start that process. While that's processing and while, um, Ursico and the town finalize the, the options, really refine these numbers so we're ready for town meeting, we can also be working with our partners, um, at the county and, um, and get ready to do an EDA application. They're gonna pull this concept in front of the Lingling Coordinator for the federal government just to make sure that they also think that this is a project that would be worthy of spending time on. Um, in terms of an application for their funding source. And if we get that sense from them, I would encourage you all to consider putting in this grant application. Of course, if you get a grant versus a loan, unless the term of the grant is unfavorable, I would assume that you would want to go the grant path. Um, but we, we won't know until we, we put our applications in for both of these things. Um, and again, it's all up to the voters about whether or not we do these projects and whether or not we do the, the funding. Obviously, as Dan pointed out and Morris discussed, there's, there's drawbacks to not doing it. Um, so we, we have many other hurdles to go through before we, we get to this project.
Morris, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I'm, I'm gonna guess in general, um, obviously, we'd all prefer a grant over a loan. Um, and I, I guess the question I have is I assume the 20% hurdle sounds a lot easier to, um, overcome than the Clean Water Trust in general, right? For the dollars we're talking about?
Sure, absolutely.
And I'm just, I guess I'm asking that in terms of there's mechanisms that Ursico and the mill could leverage potentially if, if the town couldn't or didn't want to necessarily maybe leverage the 20%. There's, there's ways you, that, is there ways that Irving, uh, Industries and, or Ursico could, could help with that?
Uh, yeah, I, I imagine so, but I don't know. We haven't really gone that far down that path on that, uh, on that mechanism. Yeah, we really, um, not all of our bags, but we put many of our eggs in the, um, in the clean water basket. It seemed to be the most obvious project and, or program. And so what I promise will be, you know, we're gonna explore every avenue on this. We did look at the, um, there's a federal main street program, which has nothing to do with, with, um, with wastewater, but it was simply a business sort of part of the PPP program. Um, it probably is not a good fit, but it just to let you know that we're looking for any source of financing that could be helpful there. So, uh, this one really does seem sort of straightforward and obvious and, and tie-in bond is very familiar with it. And, uh, you guys have had a little experience with it too, so it's, uh, it's getting the most attention.
Fair enough. Brian, do you know as Tyne or, or Morris or Mike, um, any feedback from Tyne Bond in regards to the EDA program or not familiar with it at this point? It's probably pretty new.
They were, they were just brought up to speed about, or not even up to speed, but they were informed about it by Brian last Friday at a talk we had together.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we're gonna talk more about the EDA route and we talked about the IP mill and just balancing the fact that only one, um, application can be submitted for that, for that funding. So, uh, I'm sure there'll be more discussion on that part later. Anything else now while we're talking about specifics of this project?
Obviously, I'll, any, go ahead.
I just had one question, um, um, earlier. It was mentioned that the, uh, two dryers or three dryers would go in the existing building. What is the existing building?
The, the building at Ursico. I mean, there will be a, depending on the amount of dryers, you know, if it's three, obviously we have to build on. But what we're looking for now is how can we shoehorn in two dryers into the building that we have?
Okay, cuz I, I thought I saw. I thought I saw in, um, people were from Tyne on that, um, um, an option that was probably being looked, looked at was also the, uh, treatment plant.
That's what we're talking about at the treatment plant.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. That's what I'm.
My apologies. I said we, you have.
Um, the space, Bill, where the trucks, where the trucks currently get loaded, um, is, you know, there's room for, there's plenty of room in there for two, uh, for two container trucks. And that's the space that we would be looking at adding on to and reconfiguring and so on. So, um, and, uh, it's a sort of a, maybe not a side point, but it was Brian who looked into, um, some of the town, or, or, or made clear some of the towns, um, um, what do you call it? Not permitting, but, um, um, he said, building adjacent to the existing building, yeah, zoning, thank you, somebody. That adding on to the existing building would be a lot easier than building a second building from a zoning perspective. So we're doing our best to, to keep this adjacent or simply add on to what we currently have. And obviously adding on is less expensive than a brand, than three walls is cheaper than four walls.
So, so I have another question. Have we done the, um, have we done the testing yet? Have we tested this system yet?
They have dried some sludge for us and we're very happy with the results.
Yep.
Billy, you referring to?
The dryer system?
The belt dryer, the Griffin belt dryer.
Yes.
We, we also sent samples to FICO. It's, it's a company in, uh, in Wisconsin, which was a drum dryer. And they had pretty good success drying it too, but there was a lot more ancillary equipment that was, that was needed to take care of our sludge.
Okay.
Billy, you referring to? An earlier discussion where they talked about having a, a temporary unit there to, to test out and check out?
Yes, yes.
That, that did not happen.
So we.
Go ahead, Morris.
Did not happen. We get the testing people, the schedule was off. Uh, we couldn't get the testing people in, um, uh, at the same time as we could get the dryer, which is a rental unit. And, um, to Mike's, the point that Mike just made, when we watched the videos from the other rotary dryer company, and Mike said they used a lot of preconditioning equipment, mixers and choppers and breakers. That would have been equipment that we learned, learned by watching those videos. We would have received the rotary dryer without any of the preconditioning equipment. And in hindsight, we probably, we probably would have wasted two weeks because we wouldn't have been able to properly process and test the equipment if we'd had it on site. But it was primarily the scheduling that threw the whole thing off. As well as the cost, it went from an initial estimate of twenty thousand to about eighty thousand. And we felt that we learned enough by watching the videos from the rotary dryer in Wisconsin at a company called FICO. We learned about ninety percent of what we needed to know, and we're sort of glad that the scheduling snafu, you know, postponed and saved us eighty thousand dollars. Long answer, Bill, sorry.
Okay.
But I'm good at.
No, that's fine. And and my, I I guess I, my last question would be um, early on, one of the questions concerns that came up was 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 would this present any additional air quality problems um for for the community? And um, can you, can you address that?
We haven't done all the testing on that yet, Bill. But as far as the emissions and all is concerned, that's that's obviously going to have to be taken care of with installation with the D E P and the plan going forward with them. But this is a a much slower heat dryer for the same results than a drum dryer. This runs somewhere to two, two to two fifty, two hundred to two hundred and fifty degrees to dry the sludge where a drum dryer is up over eight hundred degrees and 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 that's, that's where the problems start to occur.
Okay.
So obviously, we'll be, we'll be testing and the D E P will be involved in the in the testing protocol. Uh, so we're going to need to satisfy them first and foremost. But as Mike pointed out, I think at the two hundred degree, two fifty degree Fahrenheit temperature, we're ho- guessing and hoping that there'll be minimal air emissions uh, issues.
Okay.
So um, Mike or or Morris, either one of you, um, so you're going to feed right off the belt press right into the dryer? And then from the dryer into your transport trucks to haul it out?
Correct.
Okay.
It sounds streamlined. I know the equipment didn't look small, but it sounds pretty streamlined.
Those are two, those are two big bays where they're talking about putting a dryer, so.
And we feel like we got a little bit of room next to the, next to the press that's in place now with a little bit of a little bit of engineering to uh, make some more space.
Yep. Yeah, this, this is a soup to not solution. We we like it for that reason. It's, you know, one company delivers this. And you know, obviously, there will be performance guarantees around, you know, he doesn't leave until this thing works perfectly, so. Um, and there would be more with the other, the rotary dryer, again, still in the mix, but but losing the horse race. You have multiple suppliers doing a few different things and um, again, one more point for for the Griffin dryer.
Other questions?
I'm all set.
Does the board want to make a motion to submit the Clean Water Trust application for this project?
I make a motion um, to uh, move forward um, the Clean Water Trust Fund um, for the
Sludge dryer.
Sludge dryer.
Is there a second?
A second?
All in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Thank you. Forward on that path.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Continue working with Brian.
Thank you very much.
Sorting that out. And then uh, later, we'll talk a little more about the E D A option and and uh, e- either decide or or table that one till a future meeting on whether or not we want to also submit on that one for the same project. But we'll keep you posted. And you're welcome to stay on as well if you'd like, but we've got some other joint business, so it'll probably be a little while.
We'll be in touch with Brian.
Well, we will. Thank you for your time and attention and for your, your, the finance committee for their vote and the board for their vote. And I I just want to, I want to recognize Brian and Mariah, who've been really helpful in really holding our hand so far. And um, I did, I want to recognize them. They've been doing a terrific job for us, so we really appreciate it, Brian and Mariah, if you're on. Um, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and look forward to continuing and working on this project together.
Good enough. Good night, all.
Talk to you soon.
Good night. All right. We will continue on to our next joint business. And we'll call the joint meeting with recreation and the finance and capital planning and the board to order at seven twenty-one. I believe we have members of rec here. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you all. They're meeting with us. This is Breta.
Evening, Breta. Thanks. I think I saw Alison and Eric.
Yes.
Welcome. So purpose of this discussion is really to talk about eighteen Pleasant. And uh, you know, where we want to go with that property, what we may want to do, or you know, what are, what the future plans are with that building. As we relocated to the new library, you know, obviously uh, seventeen more building is now um, empty. And so kind of discussion around what is our future plans for these two sites? What what does the town want to do with them? And depending on that decision, uh, how do we progress with recreation? You know, where where does recreation end up um, living if if we're making a change? And so wanted you as part of that conversation. Uh, Union Twenty-eight, we had some discussions with them. Um, I had planned to bring them to the table as well to talk about that building, knowing there was a lot of costs around improvements to eighteen Pleasant, uh, some of which were identified during the library feasibility study. On discussions with them, they've made it known that they plan to move out of there tentatively by the end of the year. So exactly, that that may shift a little, you know, COVID and and everything that they're working on to make that happen. Um, but they do plan to leave that building in short order generally. So at that point, it leaves recreation in that building and two buildings that that we need to talk about. What are we doing with them? What's the long-term approach? Are we keeping them? Are we relocating? Wha- what do we want to do? And so part of that discussion is, you know, what is recreation's take on A, that building, B, needs uh, for the rec department for office space, business space, that kind of thing. I guess it's kind of maybe how I'd set the, set the framework of the discussion. Brian, Mariah, if I missed something.
You're right. And we've got, we have Blunt on as well if we needed to talk about the the buildings and concerns about. Yeah, great job. Uh, yeah, so the superintendent's office originally had been touring buildings with uh, helping Glenn over the last year to try to talk about either potential renovations to their existing space. And or as we were preparing to vacate the library space at seventeen Moore Street, whether or not that would be a facility that could accommodate them. I am sure most of you know that the superintendency Union can't own property, which is why they they rent space from the town. Um, but there was also a concern about debt service, about whether or not the other member towns could be part of a debt service if we had to do a renovation. Obviously, Irving can't shoulder the entire cost of of that renovation. And then COVID hit and we'd never speak for the superintendent, but what was relayed to me was that the experience through COVID nineteen with everybody uh, remote working has demonstrated that the office can still function uh, if they have to be separate and um, and they find a way to make it work. So um, I believe that each of the school principals and the superintendency are all working together to figure out what this new version of a central office looks like. Um, and they don't feel like investing in this property makes sense.
I'll just add two more things. A- as we talk about big picture, we have a feasibility study um, some stage of beginning to happen around Town Hall. And so understanding if we're incorporating maybe a recreation need, if there's a move or or you know, however, we may envision that into that feasibility study. And then we also have a feasibility study for um, uh, highway and wastewater, uh, because the location of their offices, um, you know, there were some significant deficiencies with that space and the ability to have people there. So we've relocated them temporarily as well. And so, you know, where's their permanent home? So we've got a handful of different moving parts, and we wanted to try to put that all together into a couple of different feasibility studies and plans on on where are we going with properties and offices and and space. So incorporating all that into a couple of plans is a lot of moving parts. I just want to, we want to get everyone's input on what what needs are, what what the thoughts are, those sorts of things.
This is Mariah. I just wanted to add to that um, I've been working with the Recreation Commission and for C O G on a strategic plan for Parks and Recreation. Um, and while this is only a blurb in that strategic plan, it is a big part of that if there is an element of like a public space that, you know, people are coming and going from versus just an office space versus maybe a temporary space while we work on some of these other ideas. That has also kind of come up in some of our conversations, both with Jess Breta and I and with the commission overall.
Sorry, I was just going to say that one of the, one of the things that specifically has been coming up um, is the idea of actually having public access to a recreational center where people can there's a a number of amenities that we have um, that are currently housed in the recreation center, but the public can't access because we don't have public hours for miniature pool table, a place for teens or seniors to meet, um, open hours during the day or on weekends or evenings. And so those items were purchased with the idea that there would at one point be public hours for people to come into the rec center and have it be a meeting space. And that's one of, not just a rental space, not just a place where people do martial arts once a week, but um, but a sort of a a community center gathering space. Um, which is one of the questions that we don't quite have yet in our strategic plan, but it was put aside because we really weren't sure what was going on with buildings. Um, but it's very definitely part of the conversation and the rec commission has discussed it.
Maybe I'll start. My, my question would be, does, does Recreation Commission have, see any use for uh, eighteen Pleasant Street? Does it, does eighteen Pleasant Street fit into um, your plans?
I don't think so. This is Eric. I think short term, you know, we would require some office space for Breta. Uh, maybe joint with Moore Street with, you know, Glenn or uh, wastewater, you know. Um, but the needs of Pleasant Street really don't fit, you know, just for E D A, all the, all the elements of that building just don't work for us. So, you know, long term, in in our study, we would, we would, you know, enjoy some more space in a recreational, maybe not a a single building, but a a joint building possibly. Giving us that center time, you know, in our twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, plans.
Yes, focusing on that building, you know, I have concerns about all of the access issues that we know of, plus, you know, just the the sheer cost to to bring some of that stuff up to compliance and or you know, weather and and efficiency and other things that, the significant investments if we were going to improve that building. So that lends to what do we do with that building and and maybe a longer term question, because obviously, we need to find at least a short-term home for recreation and then especially if there's a plan for what a long-term home looks like, but um, if there's an interim plan, uh, but we'd also need to decide what are we doing with that building then.
Yeah, I I kind of think um, eighteen Pleasant Street looks like a self need and and to look for um, a developer who would be interested in turning that into some um, housing, um, town house housing or something on the line of what's been done in in um, Greenfield area um, seems quite suited for the, for that purpose.
I mean, I'd I'd support that same direction. I think that's maybe the best case for that building is to see if we can get an interested party in it before it becomes something that needs demo or something much more severe done to it. And maybe it can be turned into something, you know, more usable again.
Agreed. I agree.
So seventeen more than um, we know it's not perfect either. Um, but there is some space in there for, you know, at least for office use for now. I know we were looking to dig up our feasibility study for the library because it talked a little bit about that building and some of the challenges specific to putting a library in, but at least it talked to some of the the known conditions there that that we may need to work through. Does that make sense as a temporary space? I mean, if if we are looking to a longer term plan and 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 roadmap on what recreation may want to do and, you know, if if that gets some support and, you know, has a has a bigger plan, at least in that interim time, if you're not having public access to indoor space currently, then does that, you know, if we can carve up uh, some office space for recreation, does that make sense? Does that make sense to the board, you know, et cetera, you know, in the interim?
Um, from a recreation standpoint, I think it'd be great to store some of the the items that we have and give Breta some space and us a little bit of meeting room. You know, without making too many adjustments to that building, I think.
I'm guessing just from the amount of of things, if we're sharing the space with um, with the wastewater department and highway department, that we would also probably need a separate storage space for some of the things that we currently have in uh, at eighteen Pleasant Street. Which it could be something that some things get shuttled around like the ping pong table. Um, but other things, I would guess we would not want to just shove into a a garage somewhere. Um, and if there's some small space off to the side that's available at um, on Moore, at Moore Street, then we could definitely do that. I don't, I don't need that much space. I just need files in the desk.
I think Glenn's still on and and Pete, you're here, obviously. Um, you know, from wastewater and highway standpoints, we've, we've bounced around the idea of of moving both of you into that building. Another move, again, still temporary while we work out feasibility on, w- you know, where do we put our public works offices long term? Any comments, questions, concerns around if we were doing that for in effect, the three of you and then obviously meeting space and uh, I agree, storage may need to be somewhere else.
Hey Jake, this is Jeff.
Hey Jeff.
So I guess, I guess what I wasn't aware of that we'd be sharing a space with with highway and and sewer. So when, when we talked about it at uh, our meeting about moving from the uh, about moving from the old building to the library, I would assume that we would have the whole library for all the stuff that we need to bring down there.
Well, and that's a possibility as well. And like I said, we've, we've tossed around both, both ways. That's part of this, this discussion is to, to talk through that and understand, you know, what, what that looks like.
I mean, because after all this stuff is done with COVID and everything and, and we get back to meeting, you know, the library itself isn't that big of a space, you know, for, we're just five of us and then all of our stuff. And then if you got other offices in there, I mean, it's gonna be pretty cramped in there. And when, when you say, you know, for the short term, we don't know what that means for short term, you know, is it a year or is it like five years?
Yeah, this is Mariah. I, I think our timelines for things. So, I think I remember when Glenn and I looked at the, at the Moore Street property, some weatherization and envelope issues that have to be addressed before we moved anyone else in there. And I just, I'm not sure if anyone knows how quickly that would be able to be addressed and what the timeframe is for Union 28 moving out of the Pleasant Street building.
So I think tentatively Union 28, end of the year, so, you know, and by January 1st, approximately, let's say, as, as just as a, as a ballpark to, to plan around. And I think then the question, the first question to me at least becomes, do we keep that building open and heated and et cetera through the winter? For Rec or do we try to find a way to accommodate Rec somewhere else if it works before then?
If we didn't keep that building heated and we moved Bretta's office space out of there, is there any, are any of Rec supplies going to be things that would be damaged if it's not heated? If we just kept the storage there?
No.
So like, it would be an option if Bretta, if your office was moved somewhere else through the winter so that we weren't heating a space that was just you going in a few times a week?
Right.
And then, I know we have space in Town Hall in the basement right now. I know that it's used for elections and right now we don't have meetings down there. Would it be an option for Bretta's office space to be there? Or, you know, in the senior center or in one of the other town spaces that is currently, you know, heated otherwise, at least through the winter? And then if we had to do work at the library building, if that was the next temporary location or, or long term location, that would give us time to do that work before, you know, we're moving people in?
Well, I guess I'll just throw it out there. Is that building part of our longer term plan? And if it's not, then do we want to make another temporary change? An improvement to a building if it's not part of our longer term plan, right? And so that's, that's part of it too. If 17 more isn't a long term solution for the town in general, then do we even invest there in the interim?
Well, I think that's two different questions, right? So the first question is, do we want to keep the Pleasant Street building? Which so far, the way that things are going, it sounds like no. Maybe, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that, you guys can disagree. And then the Moore Street building, it sounds like has at least a, a potential to be reused. And so then the question is, does Rec see a potential to use it either short or long term? And do any of the other departments see a use for it short or long term? So it sounds like, you know, Jeff was saying, he could see a use for it for having it be all of Rec, at least, you know, having that space retrofitted to be usable at a community level. And then short term, maybe it would be enough to have Highway, Water, Wastewater and Bretta's office space, but not big enough to have community space. And realistically Bretta's only there a couple of days a week and our Rec Commission meetings are on Sundays when Pete and Glenn aren't around anyways. A temporary, short term solution, but I don't know how quickly we could make that happen, given that there needs to be improvements made.
Well, I like your approach. So let's start as you did, 18 Pleasant. I think the board kind of, Pete, I'm not sure if you chimed in, but kind of felt that long term, we feel it's better off, sold off and hopefully find a developer who's interested.
Yep.
FinCon, any opinions? Or questions about?
Hey Jake?
I was also thinking that if we weren't heating it, that'd be quite a bit of savings. It can't be a very efficient building.
No, at all. True, but we also won't have the rent, which was helping offset some of the operating costs of that building. So I don't know what the economics of that look like, if it's a wash, if there's still savings or if there's, you know, how, how that would look, but there's definitely some, some math there.
I believe, I believe that the school union was... So they, they were covering the heating of the building, the school union was.
And electricity.
And the electricity.
So...
So, if the building isn't heated, then what about all the records and stuff that are in the building in the basement and, you know, if a pipe bursts and I guess that'd be a concern?
All of that's being removed, Jeff.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yep. That's why they need till the end of the year, because you're absolutely right. There's a lot of material that's been there for decades that needs to, to find a new safe location.
And I just want to reiterate, that's just a tentative date and I haven't given a firm date. That's just a rough estimate. And then we'd winterize the building, right? If we're gonna, if we're gonna keep it but not have it occupied and heated, then we would hopefully prevent any further damage and anything that need climate storage, we'd have to move.
I just comment, a lot of times unused buildings that are unheated, you do the best you can, but they deteriorate fairly quickly. If you come, come back after five years and try to figure out what to do with it, the place can be in terrible shape, even if with your best, best efforts to keep it okay. As the school union, is that's final, they're moving, that's it. I wasn't a part of that discussion.
I mean, I don't want to speak for them, Brian, and, you know, we've had some conversations with them. My understanding is it's, it's firm that they're moving out, yes. Whether that's by December 31 exactly, no, but that they are, my understanding is yes. And I agree with you. If our vision is not to keep that building long term, then, you know, I'd like to see us make an active effort to move it by next year at the latest.
This is Mariah. I would also support that if, if we decide to winterize the building and that we don't see a use for it soon, that we work on an auction or RFP this coming fiscal year.
So if just the Rec was going into the Moore Street property, that building even safer long term, would that be adequate to fill their needs?
Not for the long term.
Not as is.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Do you guys think that the space, like the square footage would be enough? If the, if the space was altered to be, you know, comfortable and have the amenities that you need? Is that footprint big enough?
I, I think it is. I mean, we, we've talked about where we would put things in there. And I mean, it's, you know, ideally, yeah, we had all like a gigantic Rec Center with a basketball court and a swimming pool, but, you know, I, I think, I think we could stay there for a while. I mean, we, we don't really have any, a lot of programs, you know, like Bretta was saying. Ideally, we'd like to have, you know, Saturdays there or whatever, but we, we've not been able to do that so far. So I hate to, I hate to not use the building or, because we, you know, I hate to say that we wouldn't use it long term, because we really know we probably would be in there for a while. So I, I think it's, you know, I...
We're used to being kicked around and homeless, so we can make it work.
Well, we're trying not to do that, so that's why we're here.
I do think that there's enough space for there to be a community area, public access to it. We may not be able to have absolutely everything out at, you know, all at once, but there's space where we can switch out some things. And there's a little room where I could shut the door and have an office. And then we could have public hours where either myself or someone else sits in the common room area, which was the main library room. It, it could definitely work and people are, there's parking nearby. It's between two different parks. And it's a familiar spot for a lot of people. So I think it could work and, and with a space that's accessible and people don't have to buzz in all the time to get in. My guess is that we'd, we'd be able to get some community time and public access time up a lot quicker, a lot easier.
Not to say it can't get done, but beyond some of the stuff Mariah mentioned around the building integrity and, you know, energy efficiency, et cetera, there's probably some layout things that would need to be done to get to that stage, as well as some ADA things I have a feeling that we'd have to do to, to make it a little more accessible to, to get there.
Can I ask, do you know why the school union, other than financial reasons? Were there any structural reasons that the school union decided against that building? Anything to do with the facilities themselves? Was, was there just too much work to put into it or? Yeah, Moore Street.
I think there was a concern that the footprint would not, even if it was upgraded, the footprint still would not be large enough for their needs.
Okay, so it wasn't anything to do with energy efficiency, et cetera, et cetera? It was really just the footprint?
More footprint, all the, the records and the other storage that Jeff was referencing. I mean, ye- yes, there's a concern about the, the weatherization of that building and the systems are, I think the building was built in 1964. So some of those, those pieces of equipment really are ready for replacement. The weatherization, I don't believe there is decent insulation in that building. So we would have to redo all of that, probably the roof. And all the doors need to be replaced, furnaces and, and there's no... I don't know when the last time that central air was replaced, Glenn may be aware. But there's just a lot of upgrades that need to be done. And so to do all of that and then not have the right footprint afterwards, didn't sound like it made sense. But to be honest, I don't know what their final decision point was.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I, I'd like to, to at least throw in that I think Moore Street is, is, is probably more appropriate for Recreation short term and, and possibly long term, with some alterations to the building possibly in the future. I, I, I don't see Highway and Wastewater, all three of them being in there at the same time. I think the building is way too small for that. So for me, I think although the way, currently the way Highway and Wastewater is, is, is not ideal and the way it's operating and functioning, it's, it's better than being in, in a building that's too small for everybody. So I would be in favor of, of finding some way to, to resurrect Moore Street so that Rec can move in, into it for the short term and then look at it for a long term feasibility study and, and looking to expand the footprint to make it something that they can live with permanently.
This is Mariah. I hate to throw a wrench into anything and make things more complicated, but I'm looking at this map and we own two parcels right next to each other. And we're talking about how the footprint of the former library is a little bit small and how we're considering offloading the Union 28 building, which has a large lawn. And I'm wondering, is there a way that we could annex some of the property that goes with Union 28 and potentially put an addition onto the former library and do a retrofit? I know that that would be a lot of money, but it sounds like we're realistically going to be building either an addition or a retrofit onto the Wastewater plant to give an off, better office space to them. And Glenn needs an office, which would have gone in there anyways. So we're looking at doing improvements either way. And I don't know if they have a preference to where they're located long term, but is that an option?
I'll quickly respond and then I'll get out of the way so Pete can respond. So the lot question, actually all one parcel. Both structures exist in parcel. Oh, if we are going to get rid of one property and try to sell it to the other, I need to work with you all to survey that and do a subdivision of that property. So in terms of where that final lot line goes, we'd be following the zoning to make sure that we have buildable lot sizes and we've got the correct frontage. So that's, that's not as much of a barrier, because we still have to do that work. But there is obviously a concern about that hillside and doing any type of addition that would cut into that hillside. Now you're talking retaining walls and other structures. Something that can't be done, it's just a consideration. And the only other thing I'll just mention, Glenn can't unmute himself on, on here. So he's sending me messages and he just wanted to let you know, back to the EC conversation, that system did stop working. And because the library staff were moving out, we did not go through the process of fixing that equipment. So we would have to make improvements to the central air system.
Okay. I'll, I'll just speak as a selectman. My feeling is generally that, that it makes the most sense to have Highway and Wastewater at the same facility they're at, they were at, at their building, you know, where their equipment and their day to day operations are kind of homed at, whether it's in the same physical building or another building on the same site. But generally, I, I mean, my preference is to see that we find a way to move them back to that area in the long run, so. To kind of answer that question, I think, Mariah. And it sounds like we can carve a lot line within the zoning. We can probably carve a lot line that captures some of the lawn space with each building. So we have some of that if there's a potential to, to move the building in that direction, if we need to expand it at some point.
Glenn would like to express agreement with your recommendation, Jake.
I'm still the old school, trying to raise my finger here in a pause. I can't speak to anything to do with the zoning or planning or subdivision technicalities of it, but the idea of carving out a part of the bigger lot for future use, if the long term plan turns out to be to keep the Moore Street building, seems like a wise thing to at least look at. And Mariah, I never look at, specifically you said you might throw a wrench in. I look at these ideas as just very interesting things that anybody brings up. And once, I think, maybe Ben Jeff mentioned, went out looking for a swimming pool and a rec building and all that stuff, everybody kind of chuckled. I, I've drawn back this picture in my mind of the first Native American guy who said we ought to have a casino, probably got laughed out of the place. And everybody kind of chuckled. It's not beyond the realm of possibility for the future use. I mean, we need our health and not everybody in Irving can go to Amherst or Greenfield or Athol or someplace else where there's a health facility. And what little health facility we do have, I believe at the senior center, it's my understanding, it's used all the time, they love it. But I'm not suggesting we won't start digging a swimming pool tomorrow, but keeping those things in mind for the long term future is a real good idea. I think. Thank you.
I just want to touch on Mariah's point about expansion. That was one of the things that was looked at for the library building project. And the cost of the retaining wall and retaining that hillside alone made it extremely... That was one of the biggest factors why we didn't move forward with that site. Because once you get into the addition... Because once you get into the addition, retaining that hill was going to be so costly. That was actually a huge portion of the budget for that site. So I think it was a great idea. I was a proponent of it back then of trying to keep that, use that site in some way. But I think the way the ground is laid out may be really non-beneficial for us.
Thank you. I was wondering what, why we didn't put the new library in the same spot, so that answers that question.
Yeah, that was a big, big problem was the ground.
Wasn't there an elevator conversation too with doing two-story or something and that gets real costly real quick too?
The elevator, that went, goes back to 18 Pleasant. I was a proponent of keeping that building and using that. I loved just that particular area of town. I think it'd be great if we, library could have stayed in that area. The problem with Pleasant Street was the accessibility and that kind of front corner where you can see on the screen that's being shared where the windows are would have to get blown off and a huge addition was going to be put on and that addition would house two staircases and one elevator. And I know at the time for the library, we were going to have to beef the building up to, I think it was 10,000 to 13,000 square feet and the bulk of that additional square footage was strictly the staircases and the elevator. And then the other problems within the building, like the windows, the systems and everything. The architecture, to be honest, he broke my heart because he came into the building and looked at it and said, "Everything you see here would absolutely have to be torn out." So the staircase, the beautiful built-ins and all the nice woodwork. So 18 Pleasant Street would have gone down to literally just a shell of itself. So the ADA complacency there was a really, really big, big issue.
It's good information and I think probably dust off that feasibility and look at that. Let Mariah dig into it as well and understand it better. I do wonder if there's other ways to use that footprint, if the parking is somewhere else or if we can park up above, you know, or change that layout somehow and still expand some if needed in the future. But I think if REC feels that in the near term and then potentially in the long term, it's feasible to use that building, maybe we can make improvements that make sense for it or maybe at that point it's a different discussion. But it sounds like the group is pretty much in consensus that moving out of 18 Pleasant would be ideal and putting that back on the tax rolls if possible and getting it, you know, improved and developed and then we're going to need to do at least an analysis of what upgrades would need to be done in the short term on 17 Moore just to make it usable for REC to move in today, you know, in the short term and before we can move, you know, move 18 Pleasant, so. Unless there's other questions or thoughts or concerns with that approach, I think, you know, maybe that's the direction, you know, Brian, Mariah, that we want to focus on is working with Glenn and, you know, studies we've had done and looking at that building as it is today. How do we make it weatherproof, system functional, usable enough to move REC into it, you know, for the next handful of years and then, you know, we can then take a longer-term approach as REC works up their long-term plan on what we may additionally do there or somewhere else. Is that kind of where we're all in agreement?
I would agree.
I agree with that.
And in the, again, in the short term, Ken, I was brought up using the space downstairs in the town hall. Is that a spot that Brett can use for the short term? Until we work out the logistics on repairing Moore Street?
Are you saying if there's a period of time between when Union 28 moves out and we want to mothball the building and when 17 Moore is inhabitable? Is that kind of what you're talking about? Does that sound, well, first of all, Brian, I guess I'll lean on you for town hall space. Is that feasible?
I would say anything is feasible. I think we need to spend some time just thinking it out, so maybe I can meet with members of the REC and Brett with Mariah and Glenn and we can have that conversation. Obviously, the town clerk will be nervous about anything that could potentially limit election space because we have an anticipated high turnout for the next two elections. But with that being said, I do think we can do a quick analysis of any of our existing spaces and see what makes sense for a short-term solution, if that is what's reasonable. If we have to keep 18 Moore open for the winter, I can come back to you with that need. Now that I have some clarity between the three groups, where you want to focus your energy, I can work with our team and start putting together your options. It was just helpful to throw all of this out on the table and have you sort of talk through what makes sense so that we can focus our energies.
I think the only standing question is Pete and Glenn, do you guys, short-term, want to also be in the former library building on Moore Street? If that was an option, or would you rather stay where you are until you had a permanent space?
And Pete and Glenn also realize that I'm going to have opposite schedules from you where I'll be working in the evenings on weekdays and then I also work in the weekends.
Brian, can you answer that on my part?
First, I'll say that Glenn appears to be enjoying his time at the senior center. I don't mind sharing office space with Pete if he doesn't mind sharing office space with me.
So I guess my ask, in addition to what Brian just detailed, would be, you know, Brian will put together some of those ideas, which will give REC, you know, the time to look at this and look at potentially an interim, multiple interim moves, if there's one to town hall before 17 Moore, those kinds of things and digest that and see if that seems feasible. The other piece will be understanding the economics, Brian, of, and Union 28 can probably help us with this, of if we keep that building open through the winter as is, because we're not ready to make a move until, you know, next summer, for example, versus what the economics of improving 17 Moore to get it to an inhabitable state, that may be a wash and it may drive that decision.
So you want to know the electricity and the heating for the balance of the year?
Yeah, well, just an estimate on what we think we'd have to invest, because that's something we didn't budget for, right?
Mariah and I track all of, even though Union 28, under our agreement, pays the gas, or excuse me, the oil and the electricity, we track that as a energy usage. So we have those gallons, so we can get you those kilowatt-hours, those gallons. I'll use our existing rate. We can get that to you pretty quick.
And then starting to put together that ballpark of what does it take to improve 17 Moore to a point where we're comfortable with it? Okay, which is not as easy, I'm sure.
No, but we can do this. When would you all want to meet about this again? We have a lot of work to do, but Paul will be here before we know it, so.
When do you think you might have some of that put together? I understand the heat and costs and electric costs might be quick, but we talking a month, a month and a half, two months, something like that?
I think, and Glenn, Mariah can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at minimum we need a month. We've got several projects sort of in the hopper right now.
Yeah, I need at least, I would need at least until September because I've got several grants that I'm working on that are due at the end of August.
Yeah, Glenn, a month is what we need.
Why don't we plan to revisit and in the latter half of September, maybe even the end of September? Give them time to wrap up the open stuff. It sounds like, unless anybody objects, I don't think any of the discussion tonight will influence the feasibility studies as we had originally planned them, so I think those can continue as they were. And we can come back and kind of revisit where we're at, maybe we understand better where Union 28 is at and talk through some of the more detailed pieces of how do we make this happen?
Before then, I can certainly get it out to all of you, so you can start reviewing it and asking your questions ahead of time.
Well, I expect you and Mariah will probably meet with REC a few times before then as well, just to talk through this before we meet as, you know, as a group again.
Agreed.
Does that work for REC?
Yeah, Jeff and I, Jeff and I are fine with that.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we'll pencil it in for late September and we'll firm up a date as we get closer for coming back to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any concerns or questions from REC before we move on?
Concerns or questions, Jeff? You have any concerns or questions? I think we're good.
Yeah, none from me. Thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you for joining us. I will make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with REC. We'll continue the joint meeting with FINCOM Capital. All in favor? Thank you. All right. So that was a big topic, but I feel like we got some good progress, so I'm excited. Other joint business, just coming through the agenda here. The discussion of MassWorks grant application draft for IPML. And this will dovetail into the EDA and the dry project as well, as we mentioned earlier, so we'll jump into that.
Let's see, that is.
Stuff expanded, Brian, you got to go way down, yeah?
It's page 127, if that helps.
Down 14A.
There we go.
So I wrote you all a memo, which I tried to condense all the information and it was still two pages long, so sorry about that. But basically, we've got several grants that we're considering or I'm working on. The MassWorks grant is the one that I'm writing right now and that is due August 28th. And we're applying for funding to put towards the access road at IPML that was proposed in the subdivision feasibility study. And you can see kind of the details of the MassWorks grant. It can't be used for demolition, which is a big stipulation. And there's no award maximum or minimum. I'm working with Time Bond to figure out how much this access road would cost. The last time we had an estimate was in, I think, 2018, so numbers have changed since then. And that number also included a lot of, like, all the demolition costs and a lot of other costs that we wouldn't be applying for, for this grant. So I'm asking them to break that apart and they should be getting that to me this week. The question that I have to be able to complete this grant application is what our ideal use is. In the feasibility study, there was a few different concepts and I've been working under the idea that we would pursue concept number one. And I think, Brian, if you scroll down there, I think I included a map that had the concept. This is, yeah, so this was concept number one. You can see the access road on the, kind of the bottom of the complex that goes along the whole complex. It's in a cul-de-sac and a parking lot. This graphic includes demolition of the site, except for several things. Building two and eight and then the construction of a new building that would be light industrial. This grant application, like I said, doesn't include demolition, so we would be required to apply for another grant to cover demolition. And right now, that would be the EDA grant that we were just talking about earlier with ERCO. So if we weren't able to use that EDA grant to apply for demolition, that would push back when we could do, when we could construct this access road unless we were able to find other funding for the demolition, which is going to be very expensive. So broad picture, that's kind of the chicken and egg scenario that we're in right now with grant funding. And it's complicated by the fact that you can, you know, if you get federal funding, you can't use a federal match for it. If it's state funding, you often keep it in the state match. So there's a lot going on with the IPML property in terms of grant funding. But the first question is, is the concept, the use, that if we're going to put in an access road, that's what we would want to do? Basically, this access road along the bank of the Millers, where there's currently a small kind of driveway, but it doesn't have the proper infrastructure if we're going to redevelop this space. We would adopt this access road as a public way, which would provide frontage for the park so we could subdivide it, so that if we wanted a developer to purchase, the person, they wouldn't have to purchase the whole thing, which might make it a little bit more manageable for a developer to come in and invest in the property. We would also be eliminating a lot of the impervious surface, all of the driveway right now. If you look along Paper Mill Road on this drawing, it's all green space. In real life right now, that is all pavement. And then in this drawing, they're turning, you know, a parking lot where building one is now. There was a second concept, which has basically along the opposite end of the lot, where the tunnel is right now, that is a second, basically access road. That would obviously cost more money, putting in basically a second access road off of the cul-de-sac, connecting back to Paper Mill Road. So Ben and I, we were discussing this ourselves, figured if we're going to try to do this right now, doing just the one access road ending in the cul-de-sac would make sense. That gets us what we want, which is access infrastructure and frontage.
All right, do you mind if I add two things?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I know you said the word infrastructure and I know we talked a lot about the, of the road, but it would also include the downsizing of the existing water and wastewater infrastructure because the capacity that exists at the mill far exceeds whatever use we'd be putting there, so we have to retrofit and may have to create at least a space for a future pump station. That would be part of this infrastructure work. And just going back to the other concept that was explored, we have a drawing of where the footprint of buildings would go, but basically you would be committing to demolishing all structures on the property, subdividing into three lots, making those three lots available publicly. So it's the same, in essence, the same concept, except in this proposal that Mariah wants sort of encourage us to make a final decision, are we pursuing this? We would be making efforts to save building two and eight, which are not small tasks, but there's certain advantages to keeping those that may make that more eligible.
Well, I have a question. So the MassWorks can't do, can't cover demo and we have the EDA question to answer. If we assume we don't apply for the EDA, so we don't have demolition money teed up, can we still apply for MassWorks grant and is it open-ended on the timeline or do we have to do it by a certain time?
The timeline is open-ended, which is why I've been writing this, even though we're not quite sure on the result of the EDA grant. Because we're not quite ready to break ground, we're not going to be prioritized for either of these grants. And Brian and I have talked about that. We think it's worth writing the application anyways because any other application we're going to apply to is going to use the same language, so it's kind of worth my time putting this together. But the reality is, we don't have final engineering and we don't have demolition done. So I'm keeping my eye out for other grant opportunities that will cover demolition and Brian and I have been discussing this with Jessica Atwood at ForCob. So there could be other options if we either apply for the EDA funding for demolition and we don't get it or if we choose to apply for a different project for the EDA funding. We could still get the MassWorks grant, I think, in theory, with an open-ended timeline. We could apply with the idea that we wouldn't start construction on. We could apply with the idea that we wouldn't start construction on this for a certain amount of time that would give us time to apply for other grants and do the demolition. Brian, are there other parts of this I'm making out?
No, you're, you're spot on. I think the only other thing that we, it's very, very preliminary, so I don't want people to get too excited about this, but our, our partner at the county planning agency has been talking to her colleagues. And there is one funding source that may, so few pay for demolition, but there is a source that's on the state level that may help a municipality with demolition that we'd be able to explore. So that was just a notice that we got today to encourage us to maybe explore or maybe make some, some communications. So we'll look into that, but very, very few actually do the demolition portion.
Yeah, the other part of this is that the EDA grant funding is a rolling admission, like we discussed earlier, so there is no deadline, so it gives us a little bit of breathing room to kind of sort out some of the details of what we actually want to apply for in terms of demolition. It's also an 80% grant with a 20% non-federal funding match. Which is huge. And that's not usual. This is a, that's a change that they did after COVID and they, they're now allowing applications from anywhere in the country because anywhere in the country is considered distressed because of COVID. This is kind of a new opportunity that is just coming to be available to us now in this new way. We can't use any money that we spend before we're under contract for either of these towards the match, so we can't do final engineering on this and then use that as a match towards the grant. The EDA funding can be used for the demolition and the final design. We would have to have the preliminary engineering report to apply, we'd pay for that out of pocket. And we would likely work with Ty and Bond on that since we did the original subdivision feasibility study. The other part of this that is a little bit, it's frustrating to me, but a little bit more complicated is that when Jessica from ForCog spoke with the federal representative for the EDA, she suggested that we do an updated feasibility study. And Jessica is trying to figure out if that is a personal preference or a preference of the EDA for the grant funding. And we could apply to cover that feasibility study back a year at least for the demolition and the access road. I also literally during this meeting got an email about another grant opportunity which can be used for master planning and feasibility studies. I think it's a little bit frustrating for me just because we have a feasibility study, even though it is outdated. I think their idea behind it is that it has updated numbers on things like job creation, which are really important, and that's going to be part of the Mass Works questions as well for for how they're looking at prioritizing these developments. Yeah. That's a lot of information.
Well, let me, if I may, I'm thinking that maybe we should approach this from the other side first. Do we want to potentially apply to EDA for the sledge dryer project? Because if we do, that at least is one answer and it changes some of this decision. And it's a lot to absorb. Do we want to take a little time? Because that's a rolling application, so that we have time on. The Mass Works, not so much.
The other thing I will just add to that is that the sledge dryer, I mean, like Morris sent you today, they have the engineering done for that. So, and it already is directly related to private development, which has job retainage. So they would have a very, we would have a very strong application to turn in, in my opinion. That would be a very strong application to turn in, whereas this application is not shovel-ready and we don't have engineering done. So that's another part of that.
So made the comment that we can only apply for one EDA grant. Does, and none of us can predict the future, but does that mean that if a project's approved, you can't apply again, or do we not have any idea how that'll play out over time?
I think that realistically, oh, go ahead, Brian.
I was gonna say, we can, we can apply again in the future. This money that's specifically coming out, I know it's under there, one of the grant programs, but this is related to the, the CARES Act and some of the relief packages coming out. They're trying to get this money out quickly. So under this current funding round, we would only really have a good shot at one, and to Mariah's point, the other project is for the pulp. But that wouldn't stop us in the future if we needed to wait another year or two applying again. The one thing that we should just be caught cognizant of is that they relax some of the expectations and some of the eligibility because of the pandemic. And so if things start to return to a new version of normal, it, it may be reasonable to anticipate some of those eligibility requirements may come back into play. This project may or may not qualify.
I'll, I'll just add too that this is not not a state-funded grant. This is a federal-funded grant that is open to the entire country. The, the likelihood that we will receive funding for two projects in a town the size of Irving is very, very, very low, so I would not bank on getting this twice.
That's fair.
Thoughts on which way we'd want to lean with applying for that money?
If, if our chances in the current situation for the IP property are slim to none anyways, because we don't have the final engineering and shovel-ready, whatever you want to call it, how much would we have to put in to make that application more feasible?
I think it would realistically be quite a bit, and it would take a little bit of time. Which, we have the rolling application to our advantage, but that money is finite.
As, as, as much, just financially, as much as I would like to see us get out from under the financial burden and turn it into a, a financial asset on moving forward with this IP property, so it's not with us forever. It seems to me wise to proceed with something that's not a sure thing, but we're way closer to a sure thing than the IP. And I can't speak for the mill. I think I haven't talked to Morris in a couple of years since we talked about library stuff, but it sure seems like if, if this is a grant rather than a loan, it sure would be a boon to industry in Irving. Irving industry, but in, you know, not Irving Industries, industry in Irving. If we could secure a grant for, for part of that.
I'm, I'm going to agree with, with Dan. I, I don't really like, you know, this is, this is, I'm in my ninth year and, and we're still talking about the IP. And we're no closer to it than we were, you know, six years ago or 10 years ago. We're still out there. And I, I think the option of, of turning the sludge into a grant as opposed to going in, in, in debt seems to make a lot of sense. So I would be in favor of moving to use, to try to use this as a as a a, a second way to possibly obtain the sludge, fudge belt slash whatever you want to call it, but
A dryer?
Dryer, yes. Yeah, I'd be in favor of doing the two in hopes that we get one of them.
So it sounds like, if I'm understanding everybody's thoughts on this, and, and I don't know that we need any formal votes tonight. I think, Mariah, we're looking for guidance on the EDA issue so that we know how to guide future conversations and some of our efforts. In terms of the Mass Works, Mariah, can you remind me again of the application deadline? You said the 28th?
Um, it's, yeah, the 28th. And then announced in October.
So it sounds like there's not opposition to continuing to work on the Mass Works application for some of the work that needs to happen at the IP mill. And we could put that on your agenda for the 24th if you're open to it, to see if you're ready for us to submit that application. And in the meantime, we still have a few other sources that we're still learning about that we may be able to research that may help towards site readiness at the IP mill. But am I understanding everybody's direction correctly?
Well, I'd be in favor. I ask this question, are we in favor that we all feel that this is the concept that we're headed towards? Because we did a lot, I mean, to Bill's point, we did a lot of feasibility work. Then we asked for some additional revisions when we had a lot of interest in light industrial from businesses in, in the surrounding area. And then, not, you know, we've done cleanup and some other things, but I don't recall us really revisiting and firmly, which I think is part of the question tonight, planting a flag and saying, this is the direction we want to go. And we're, we're we're committed to trying to make this become a a solution that's viable long-term. And am I correct, the Mass Works grant needs us to commit to, this is what it's gonna, this is what we're trying to make it look like?
In, well, in both concepts, assuming you like either of the two concepts, either a complete blank slate where we're going to subdivide into three parcels, or the version on, on the screen in front of you where you're going to have three parcels, but you're trying to keep building two and tie in building eight a little bit. The access road is almost identical. The need to, to downsize the wastewater and water infrastructure is identical. So that work still needs to happen. The placement of these things are all in the same space, so I don't think that you have to narrow down that decision today in order to do the Mass Works application. So I think we're safe there as long as you're okay with this idea that this property is going to be subdivided. I think we're somewhat in agreement of that.
Brian, I'm just gonna interrupt you because I actually do need more of a specific direction in that for the application. So the application is asking for basically job numbers and specifically what that space will be used for. And so we don't have to necessarily, we don't know what a private developer will come in here and do, but we do have to have a general agreement on the direction we want to see it go and what our goals are. And so concept one includes saving building two and, and having that become residential and commercial space. Building eight, I believe, has space for a new restaurant. Then the demolished space in the mill has a new building, which is 22,000 square feet of light industrial space. So we necessarily have to decide on what is in each building. But the idea that we have mixed-use residential, commercial, and light industrial space versus concept two was demolish the whole thing and put in all light industrial and subdivide it, so that's three different lots. Those are, you know, one is mixed-use and one is not. And I would say that this year's Mass Works grant leans heavy towards mixed-use with affordable residential and job retaining or creating. Which is why I started running with concept one, because it includes those things, but I wanted to confirm with you all that that was what you wanted to see right now.
Just to add on to the square footage conversation, so the, the new residential building that's proposed here that, that references 22,000 square feet, that's a single-story building. So I, I think it's conservative to say a building of that size footprint, but we don't know for sure that it wouldn't have more than one floor, and we don't know that it wouldn't have an office space on top of it. We don't know. In terms of building two, as you can see on the little legend on the bottom, it talks about the uses of the different floors. So that is retaining all four floors and using the lowest, the building has like a half-floor, that would probably be mostly utilities in HVAC, ductwork, and things of that nature. So the rest of the four floors would have that mixed-use that Mariah's discussing. In the other concept, they were just calling out a footprint. So the square footage in concept two is just the footprint. Again, it could be one story, maybe it would be a second story. I don't think you're going to find somebody to build four stories. And the impacts of that go back to advantageous applications for grants, goes back to historic tax credits, goes back to affordable housing tax credits. And it will also have an impact for the assessors in terms of taxable square footage. This, some of the, the pros and cons of all of this.
I, I, thank you, Jake. Shaking your head for me. I would strongly favor what I'm seeing on screen here with building two, the new building and building eight being retained rather than just a vacant lot with everything torn down. May or may not be more expensive to develop this way. I don't know that. I see about 45 trees. I guess that's what those little green things are, but I would, just from my point of view, I just think it would be better off with running with this, what I'm seeing in front of me right now, rather than tearing all along, make a vacant lot. I may be looking at that all wrong, but that's how I see it, just for my thought on it.
And I don't want to go backward because generally I was in favor of kind of these concepts and where we headed, but realized these were concepts, a rear member, that these are concepts that were added on to a feasibility study that had a lot of different dimensions. I think there was four, five, six different proposals throughout the eight buildings, which stayed, which didn't, different road types, you know, different uses, a lot of mixed-use. But there was a lot of other approaches to it in the first round of feasibility study, you know, documents. These were additional that we kind of made a few recommendation adjustments and asked for another set. I'm not saying we need to back up to those, but I just make sure we're thinking about the whole thing and saying, you know, this is where we feel is the best direction. If we're going to take action, it starts to define that picture firmly.
Jake, my, my comment was based on either vacant lot or this. It wasn't based on, you know, what were the other things? Certainly reasonable to take the time to consider those other things after walking through there. I mean, I'm not a historian, but I despise tearing down that stuff where, you know, the floors are like eight, 10 inches thick. I mean, it's just this incredible structure in and of itself. I don't know what it takes a developer to use it, but some of the things that'll be torn down, I hate to see them go. So if those other opportunities, other versions may retain something different, that's what you'd like to go with. I certainly don't object to that either. But when I have to choose between a vacant lot or this, I would take this instead.
I mean, this is the one that I was most drawn to as we were, that I felt was the most successful as we've been going through this. The, the piece that I always struggle with, and I don't know that we can get that answer and why we're here today, I would gather, is what is the most appealing to developers? You know, and, and how do we find the right balance of what we'd like that area to be used as and what is appealing to developers?
And to that answer, there is no answer. We've been approached by everything in between. We've been told that if we would clear the site, people would build in a heartbeat. We've been told that if we would get rid of certain sections of the building like this proposes and keep the, the oldest section, that that would be the most advantageous. So we thought we were creating a happy medium here. I was also, Mariah and I did a tour back probably in February, I think, instead of winter. And the gentleman has done this type of work all over the, the country. And he said, keep the entire structure. He, he could picture it all come back to life. I don't know that that's reasonable, and I know that we got sections of that building that are in very, very bad shape. We're not proposing salvaging those areas. So we've heard it all. We've yet to see somebody actually We've yet to see somebody actually say, we're ready tomorrow to do it. So these grants are gonna, to Mariah's earlier point, these grants are going to ask us to just commit to a vision. And that comes with risk. But if, if we don't look like we're confident about the vision that we're pursuing, it makes it hard to convince a funder that, that if they put their money behind us, that we're going to see this through. So we may just have to take this leap.
The other, the other point to, in terms of commitment is this access road will allow us to subdivide the property. And if we subdivide it and, you know, RFP it out, someone could propose taking down building two if they still wanted to. If they wanted a totally cleared property and that was what they felt was most advantageous, they could pose that and then we would have the review power over that. So we can't build back building two once it's taken down. So I think this allows us to be, you know, as much as conservative as we can be without keeping the whole structure there, which is a lot of liability.
And if we put this proposal in with the Mass Works application and then go out and RFP down the road and they want to remove that or do a building twice the size, half the size, that kind of flexibility still exists that doesn't hamper that?
I, I mean, Brian, you can speak to this probably better than I can, but I don't think that they can hold a private developer to a standard. I think, you know, we would probably have to show that we're, we're looking for, you know, a use that is similar as in line with what we proposed. But I think if we said we would prefer someone keep building two and use it as commercial residential mixed use, but all of the applications came in saying, we can't do this, we need to knock it down. I don't think that Mass Works can come in and say, no, you can't. The town of Irving proposed something different.
Well, based on that, then I would, I'd want to support this towards a grant application and at least a direction.
Second.
I agree.
Okay, is everyone on the same page as that? Then I'll keep moving forward with Concept One?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah. We'll review it one more time before you submit next meeting. So I think that. But, but yes, you're headed in the right direction with this one.
Okay. So and then we'll move forward with the EDA funding application for the sledge dryer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should. What does the timeline look like down there? I know it's rolling. Do we have any sense if we submit? End of the month or in September like we are with the other one, one we would hear?
That's the unfortunate thing is we don't really have a feel for that because it is rolling admission and because it is new funding, there isn't really a precedent set for it. So really the advice we've been told is the sooner the better because we're competing with everyone.
The only, the only guidance that they did give us was that they do have a communication schedule. So they have to issue comments within 30 days. Then there's another level of review that I believe they have a 60 day window. So it does sound like it could be a couple of months. It may put us around the same announcement period of January, like we would hear around the Clean Water Trust Fund. But it does sound like there will already be some communication back and forth about the viability of your application, just not a firm decision.
And that's the reason I asked is if we get approval on one and we're still waiting on the other, we're going to want to know both before we act.
Right.
Okay. There's some direction.
Yeah, thank you. This is really helpful.
Good. I believe unless anyone has anything else for the FinCon. That was it. We have a review of the survey for the Arch Street Lot Subdivision in Riverfront Park. I don't know that FinCon is welcome to stay, but they'll have to for that.
I, I think I'll leave, but I also want to thank all three of you for including the finance committee with select board discussions and things. It hasn't always been the case and it sure makes it a lot easier when we can discuss differences or discuss similarities in meetings, instead of just arriving at some town meeting somewhere and finding out either we, either there's misunderstanding or lack of understanding or disagreement. I applaud you doing this, you know, joint meeting stuff. It's very helpful, in my opinion. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, if there's no further joint business, then make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting, continue the select board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll probably schedule another joint meeting in the next month, give or take, and keep going on these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for joining us. All right, Brian, let's see, we've got a few more that I think Mariah's hanging in there with us for. So actually, most of the rest of them, right? Any preference, Brian? You want us to go back up, start from eight, or do you want us to continue on from where we are or?
If you want to just keep going and we'll, we'll deal with Arch Street and then go back up to, to Logos?
Works for me. Review of the survey for Arch Street Lot Subdivision, West Main Street Parking Lot. So this is the carve out, for those that recall, of the old Usher Mill building in Riverfront Park. So it was always in the plans. It never formally registered a separate lot, right?
Yeah, you all took a town meeting vote, I want to say in 2015, that this was the intention of the citizens was to permanently preserve the land that the former Usher Mill stood on and two other parcels. But this parcel in particular, you wanted the, the remaining mill building and approximately one acre of land, I believe, was the vote to be removed and subdivided, and the state agreed to that. We just have not done that to date. They, they did not forget. I, the correspondence, just to say, we're, we're going to revisit this and they fully understood. And we have already sent this back to the state. And they have confirmed in writing that this aligns with their understanding of what you all agreed to. So they have no reservations about you proceeding with the subdivision plan.
And so the, the line with the X's around the building, that's approximately the current fence, is that right?
Correct.
And then that, what it took me a while to read says concrete pad in the, in the front of the building there is, is in front.
Yes.
The gravelly area in front of that, yeah.
The idea is that there's enough space between the edge of the parcel and what is right now the, the building to have a driveway or access road.
I think a few of your, the different concepts that the former Usher Mill Reuse Committee and town had looked at, maybe demonstrated a parking lot off to the side, to the west side. So you would need that space to, to have that pass through. It does have enough frontage off of Arch Street, so you do have a buildable conformant lot. And Jake, you and I had also talked about maybe in the future, parking is a concern down there. And currently we use right off the west side of Arch Street towards that fence, we have a hard pack. And so it's been used for a makeshift parking space. So that could become in the future, a piece that you break off and actually make a part of Arch Street permanently as on-street parking, if, if that was a need that you all identified.
Will we do that by expanding the layout?
Yeah, we would, we would redo a, a proposed alignment of Arch Street with those meets and bounds adjusted. And then we would just take that back to town meeting and, and ask the citizens if they would vote to adopt similar to what we did with Wheelock Street, except in that example, you were gifting land. The thing is you own this parcel, so you would be in full control over that. And whether or not you keep this in town control, or whether or not you put it on the market in the future through either an auction or an RFP, it's a buildable lot, so.
Any questions or concerns with that layout?
No, I have none.
Are you looking for a motion from us, Brian, to?
So this doesn't, doesn't require your signature, but I guess you would, as a board, take a vote to authorize us to file this with the planning board so they can go through the subdivision review process?
Is there a plot number or?
Um, I don't have a plot there. He's calling it Lot One here. That's his proposal. But if you want, we can use to say Arch Street doesn't. It's, so it would be, I guess, a motion to approve the submission of the plan for Lot One on Arch Street to the planning board?
So this is going to the planning board for us, and then the planning board's gonna do the work to subdivide it?
Right. They, they have a subdivision bylaw that they follow for the splitting land. So I can't imagine they're going to challenge us on this, but it's, it's their purview.
Yeah, I'd like, like to make a motion to approve the survey for the subdivision of Lot One on Arch Street.
And submitted, excuse me, and submitted to the planning board?
Yep, and submitted to the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mariah, working on this with our surveyor.
Do we also need to approve the town parking lot?
No, so just, it's on here, just because we asked them to do both projects. That's your town parking lot with the bounds reestablished. So there's no change to what you have. But what you will notice is that the, the dotted line is the actual paved surface. And the solid lines are your lot lines. So there's a little, so like a diagonal polygon. It's interesting. So it doesn't fully align to your paved surface out there. And we are clearing our boundaries now. And there's just the, the note, why we wanted to do that project. We were talking about the EV chargers. We were concerned about having to trench the, the parking lot or whether or not we could just go right along the edge on that paved surface. And we now are, are very clear that we can go right along the outside of that paved surface and not have to cut up the parking lot.
Good. As we're talking about surveying, you, you mentioned earlier, we're talking about 17 more and 18 pleasant. Should we, should we move forward with getting a survey down there as well, since we're going to need that information to make any decisions there?
I'm going to get you a quote on that.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go back up from the bottom. COVID-19, I know I'm jumping around. COVID-19 micro enterprise relief loan program application review.
There we go.
Sorry, it wasn't open.
Well, Brian finds that, I just wanted to say that we had the paperwork signed on our, the first loan that you guys approved. So that's, the check is being worked on for that, but that's all, all that paperwork is good to go, which was very exciting.
Excellent. So this is our application for $5,000 micro enterprise relief loan applicant is Jeffrey and Rita Dubay. And it's Freight House Antiques Incorporated, Odin Enterprises Incorporated. To cover payroll, utilities, mortgage, rent, fixed costs. Same general structure as the last one, right? Five months, zero percent forgivable if, if authorized based on the criteria later.
Correct.
I make a motion to issue a forgivable loan to Jeffrey Dubay and Rita Dubay of Freight House Antiques Incorporated at Odin Enterprises Incorporated at 11 East Main Street, Irving, Mass, through the town of Irving's, Irving's COVID-19 Micro Enterprise Relief Program in the amount of $5,000 minus closing costs for a term of five months and an interest rate of zero percent. And to authorize Jacob A. Smith Board Chair as signatory on all necessary loan instruments.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Let me know when it's ready and I'll come down.
Okay. Where are we going next?
Let's do the town logo brand design. I'm sure Mariah is excited about this.
Yay. I will say.
We had a good round while you were out last time. I don't know if you got a chance to kind of look through them all last time and?
Yeah, actually, I sat with Mariah for a few minutes and looked at them. At the final one anyways.
Yeah, and I talked to Paula this morning. So we had a good conversation about some of the, the design elements on this latest round. So I'm not going to tell you what our feedback was. You have to give me your feedback first and then we can talk about it.
I feel like we're bartering for feedback here. It's great. All right. Lost our navigator. Here he is.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
There are four new, um, new designs. And it turned out that we actually had a round of designing left that I forgot about. So this was free, which is a nice bonus. So if we do want to make further changes, there will be the hourly rate. But we, I thought we had three rounds and we had four. So that's nice. Um, so the changes are not substantial on these. They were tweaks. And a lot of it is just color. Which is, um, we, we had kind of asked for some font changes, which are all the same across the board. But most of the differences on, on these are just colors. So Brian, if you want to go to the first one. So she had taken out the little green half or quarter circles in the, in the front. She moved up the banner some and extended it a little bit farther out to the side. So that's a little bit more separate from the hexagon. She lightened the mountains a little bit in the back. I think she lightened the green on the sides a little bit. And then she changed the font for a great place to live to the one that we asked her to. Um, and I asked her for the, you guys can tell me if you like this. I had asked her for the Town of Irving font. We decided that we wanted it to say Town of Irving instead of Irving. And I asked her if we could do an all caps font, but have the first letter of each word be a little bit larger in terms of size. I wasn't sure if that would help. I know we kind of went back and forth on whether we wanted the mixed case or all the same. That was kind of a compromise that I thought of to see how we liked that. And then the outline of the hexagon is the maroon in blue.
Do you want me to go to each of them or do you want me to go one by one?
I don't have a preference, gentlemen.
I don't, I don't either.
Each one, then we'll go back to the top and talk through them.
So this one is pretty much the same, but the outline is gray and maroon.
It's a little more variation in the shoreline.
I think I have one on the one foot or no?
I like that variation. I caught it in the first one. Gold, brown, or, or dark, something like that.
It gives it a little bit of depth. It gives it a little bit of depth.
Those two, this is three.
So this is the yellow from the sun and then the maroon and then the mountains are even lighter on this one. And I think the, um, the green mountains have a little bit more of a gradation, so they get a little bit darker towards the back.
Is it a different green as well?
Maybe.
It's lighter in the front and darker in the back.
I think it's the same tone. It's just a gradient.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was number three. And then number four, the border, is that the change?
Yeah. So this is also map ends, but the border is yellow and green.
I don't like the maroon in this one. I don't think it adds anything to the orange.
Nope.
Let me go back to the one prior to it.
It's brighter, but I missed that orange tone. I think it's a it's I I like that orange earthy tone that we are not orange. I'm sorry, the reddish maroon tone that we had. The other one, myself.
No on this one.
So I guess if because they're all so similar, if you want, I can tell you some of them. There was a few changes that Paula and I thought might with this.
Before you do, I'm curious what what the what the other two.
Okay.
If you don't mind, I I the gray in the back is still throwing me, but I'm at a loss of what to do with it. If we went a dark green or something instead of that light gray at the end of the river, just feels weird. It it feels like the river is dumping into grayness or something. I don't know. The river turned gray at the end. I I just something about that I I'm struggling with still. I think the gray border on this one brightens it a lot versus the other, the the first one. Amazingly.
So go to number one real quick. Try that with the gray border.
That's what the difference is, isn't it? Is it just the gray border between one and two?
No, I think the gray where the river dumps in on this one's darker. Maybe not.
I think it's whole thing look darker.
So.
Interesting.
Paula and I both felt like there was too many colors just overall on almost all of these. Um, and so we talked about maybe simplifying the palette a little bit and, um, let's see, so you can you talked about the mountains, Jake, of I I kind of agree. I don't have a great solution for that. Maybe a dark green is something that we can see if if that works. But I think something that will make a big difference is right now the river, um, ends kind of horizontally. When in real life, the river wraps around that mountain, it turns the corner. And I think maybe having her just change that line a little bit so that the water, it it just kind of alludes to the fact that the water is turning there rather than stopping at the gray mountains will maybe help what you're saying where it looks like the water just turns into gray.
So you're just basically saying move that a little so it almost starts to wrap around the tip of the green on the right side? Move it back just a tiny bit further on the right side?
Yeah.
I think that might. I I you cut out a little bit. Did you say that Paula, in your thoughts, was there's too many colors?
Yeah. So the other thing that we had talked about was, um, right now, like the banner is a a beige color. Maybe taking one of the grays from either the mountains or the bridge and having the banner be a light gray and same with a great place to live because the beige is kind of its own color right now and it doesn't really match anything else. Um, Paula's other thought, okay.
Is a great place to live that beige, not the light gray?
That is really hard to tell. But I don't know.
I think if it's not the light gray, it should be fine because we can't tell the difference.
Um, one thing that I had proposed was making a great place to live either either gray or matching the yellow from the sun. Um, having it balance out evenly. Um, that might, you know, that right now the sun is the only thing that is yellow and so it might kind of balance it. Um, Paula thought that taking down some of the on the left side, the green, it's it goes really high and it takes up a lot of space. And so her thought was maybe just bringing that down a little bit so that it's not as big of a green blob that kind of takes over the logo. Um, and just keeping that same shape, but just bringing it down a tiny bit. And that would give the sun a little bit more space and it would give it a little bit more sky. And then right now, the blue that is used for the sky is like a really bright blue that isn't found anywhere else on here. Um, and so we talked about maybe keeping the same tone as the lightest part of the river, but lightening it just a little bit more and then using that as the sky so that it's not as much of a contrast. Um, for the outline, she really likes the idea of having, um, having it be gray with a navy outline. So that would, what that would do though is it would eliminate the maroon color entirely. I know Jake, you or Pete, someone, one of you said that you really liked the maroon color. Um, so maybe a compromise is like the one that we're looking at now has the maroon with a smaller amount of gray. Maybe we flip it. Or we could keep the gray and the maroon. Um, she also, we both kind of felt like the gray on the bridge was a little bit too light. The bridge isn't white in real life. It's more of like a a grayish color. Um, so maybe we darken the bridge a tiny bit and that will have less competition between the bridge and the banner. It would still, you know, show up, but it wouldn't be, it's not white.
Oh, pretty sure the bridge is green.
Really?
I think it's green. I don't know why.
You're talking about
with the white because it would stand out from the green.
Right. I think it still needs to stand out, but maybe it matches one of the other grays so that it's not a totally new color or something.
I don't know if the bridge needs two grays. You could probably go to the darker gray. It's a whole thing, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure they're trying to give definition to the roadway, right? A little bit maybe by that darker gray band.
Yeah.
Right.
You you offered a lot of thoughts. Um, I my thoughts on them. Uh, I like the idea of taking the lightest watercolor and, um, lightening it a few more shades and making it the the sky. I feel like the sky is a odd color to me. So I would like that. It's more of a bluish to me, a warm blue. Um, I'm actually wondering in the back where the light gray is at the end of the river, if we just did away with it and it was all the darker color of the mountainside, that would look better. I'm wondering if my problem is what is the gray? I don't want to call it a blob, but you made that comment about green. I'm wondering if part of what I struggle with is what is that supposed to mean? And if it was just the mountain line, you know, or the the kind of the hillside, if it would seem better.
Yeah, we could ask for that as an option.
On the left, you talked about bringing the green down where it's above the hills and everything. Would you bring it down below the hills? Would we extend the hills or just bring it down just a little bit?
I'm not sure. I I think, uh, I think it could come down just a little bit. In real life, the, when you're looking at it from this perspective, the foreground mountains and the background mountains almost it kind of meet at the same level. That might look a little bit weird on here, but I do think it could be cut down just a little bit so that it's not not quite as blobby.
That technical term is going into the moods.
Glad it's being commemorated.
We want less blobby. The back of the banner, I mean, I don't see any reason it couldn't be the lighter gray. I think that would be fine. I I don't know. I don't. I'm not tied to that that beige color. I don't know. What does everyone else think?
Try it.
Do we like the fonts? Are those things that we're just good on?
I like them.
I don't like the capital O.
Do you like the capital T and E though?
Yeah, I almost wonder if just the slightly more pronounced would be helpful too, but I do like it the way it's slightly larger. It's almost so subtle, it's hard to pick up on. I think I only catch it on the E unless I look really closely.
Big O.
I know you talked about less colors, but I actually think I like the gradient green better than the the solid green and maybe because it makes it less blobby.
I agree with that, actually.
So gradient on the hills?
Yeah.
We said no on the orange border ones, right? Is that what we all agreed? Yeah.
Yes.
So we're talking about changes between one or two?
Yeah. So for the hexagon, do you guys want to see these changes with the maroon and the gray? It it? How do you guys feel about the navy and the maroon? It looks very dark to me.
Can you shrink this enough to see one and two on the same page, Brian, with them still visible or no?
If you want, I can share my screen with them opened up. I think I have them saved separately. You can. Oh, there you go.
Of course, you get the wrong ones, though.
That's a opposite.
Try that. Oh, yeah, that's not gonna help.
Sorry.
Anyway, no, that's okay. I it kind of gives me the perspective I was looking for. I just wanted to say, I think the difference in two is that it feels much brighter because the border is light instead of dark.
Right.
I I'm drawn to the first one, but it's dark. It's definitely dark. And then the in the little bit of border color makes a huge difference.
The navy and the maroon don't totally, they don't show up next to each other and honestly, if you're at all colorblind, they're not gonna look any different to each other. So it's just gonna look the same. Um, design wise, I think you want at least a a dark, thick line and a lighter inner line. Whatever those two colors are, I think is up to you, but I think they need to be dark and light and not too dark colors.
I I mean, at this level, and and if you think about someone standing a little ways away from a vehicle or from a sign or anything like that, I couldn't tell you that there's more than one color on the border on the first one. I would tell you the whole thing's maroon. You know, it it's just you lose it. Like you said, you you don't see it.
You could also do just one color. It doesn't have to be two outlines. It could be, if you want it to be like maroon or just be navy or gray, you could do that as well.
You can go back to zoomed in, Brian, unless everyone wants to see it at this level. I just wanted to kind of see him on the same page for a second. This feels worse than the first rounds.
There's such that it's hard.
Do we like this darker or do we want to go something lighter like this? Or just a single color border?
Did you just change the border?
We'll zoom in a little more, Brian, please.
Can we zoom in?
Yeah. So you can see that light gray around the maroon and the other one, it's blue. It's almost impossible to see it, but.
Yeah. I know I like this. I think it looks nice.
Yeah, I, oh, go ahead.
No, I I like the gray better than the the blue. You can makes it stand out.
Yeah.
Would you?
What if we did the orange that was in the second ones around it instead of the gray? Or the yellow, whatever color, the sun color, right? Is that what was in the the second set? In the border?
Yes.
What if that wasn't the outline around the maroon instead of the gray?
I think it keeps with the the light in the dark idea. Um, it might still be a lot of color.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
I think you could do, um, maybe do a thick outline of gray and then either do either do like the dark gray that's on the mountains in the background with the yellow out like the yellow thinner outline, like a a dark gray and the yellow from the sun, or you could do, um, like the gray with the maroon as the skinnier outline. That's another option. And we can see multiple of these. You don't have to necessarily decide on one. But if there's a few that you want to see, I can ask her to do those.
Well, do we agree with this is probably the the base for the next round?
Yes.
Yes.
Which number is this, Brian?
Two.
Two, four, two. Oh, I think we should gradient the the mountain, the hills.
Okay.
Try try a green gradient. When I say try, I liked it on the other ones. Um, I'd be curious to see one where there's not two grays. We just take the darker mountains and adjust that waterline a little bit like you talked about.
What are your thoughts on radiating the mountains in the background so that they go from that light colored gray to the dark color at the top?
Hmm.
Or is that too much?
No, that
that could work.
That could work, yeah.
And I like the idea of seeing the the watercolor a couple of shades lighter as the sky. If the great place to live is not the light gray, I think there's no reason it can't be. I'd like to see the banner with the light gray instead.
Yep.
I know.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I know you're an advocate against it, but Bill, you'd you'd asked about seeing Irving with established or on either side of it. I don't know if we want to see that or not. We haven't seen that yet, I don't think.
If you saw that, do you want it to say established on one side and then the day on the other, or would you want to all be on one side or how would you want that to look?
What if you put it underneath the great place to live?
The discussion, Pete, last time was, we just had Irving. We didn't have town of, so it looked kind of narrow and solo by itself in the middle. And so I think one of the design ideas was to put EST period, like all lowercase, maybe slightly script on one side and then the the year on the other side. To give it some balance with just Irving instead of town of. If my memory serves, I think that's what we were talking about, right, Bill?
Yeah, um, kind of can't visualize it now because, uh, letters take up the whole banner.
Right.
But when it was it just Irving in the But when, was it just Irving in the middle before?
It was. Do you have those, Brian, last week's, or last times too? Down further?
Was it the, oh, that was not there? Oh, yeah, 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 there we go, yeah.
And I think instead of the stars, you were saying maybe a star, like an EST and a number.
Yeah, I was thinking, um,
Back up to three, yeah, three, one, three, two, Brian. Or, or this one, example, like putting EST in, in the years on either side.
Yeah. You know, put eighteen over there and, what is it, eighteen, thirty-eight over there? I don't know, I, I'm pretty, I, I'll be honest, I'm pretty happy with the way it looks now. Um, I know I don't like the style. Don't do anything for, for the banner, so. And I, I do like what I see there except for the small changes that we've already indicated, so. Um, I think I can live with that. Maybe change the, the color of the banner as suggested.
I'd like to see maybe a slight increase to the T and the E. False size, you know, version with that and the O at the, the short size.
Sure.
And then do the hook for the river around the hill.
Hmm.
Yep.
Yeah, for sure.
And I'm okay with making the blobby a little smaller.
I'll be sure to use that language too.
Very technical. I, I'm open to some more border ideas. I mean, I, I kind of, I like the maroon personally, but, um, tweaking either the colors around it a little more if, if you have creative ideas with the designer.
Okay.
I'm curious about pulling that sun color around it as the narrow line, but I don't know if it would just clash with the maroon.
Yeah, I can ask her for a few different options and I'm wondering too, I know that she couldn't do the design, um, with me live, which is moving parts around, but now that we're just changing colors, she might be able to just, like, share her screen with me and fill different colors in and that would make it a little bit easier to just hour with her trying different things out and then like, then I can just pick a few different options from that that seem like something you guys might like.
That makes sense. And I'm open to a darker bridge. It is a very white bridge, almost white.
Okay, I can take all of that to her. I think that was really good specific feedback. She's been very happy with how specific our feedback has been so far.
Good. Any other ideas you guys want to see?
No, I, I think you're almost there. Just a tweak.
It's exciting.
It is exciting.
All right.
Thank you. All the stuff that Mariah was on here for?
I think so. My highlighted agenda, I think we have a business license, we have the primary warrant and we have minute, meeting minutes. I think that's what's left.
There's all that we have left. Crank them out.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mariah.
Have a good night, everybody.
Hi, Mariah.
Bye.
All right, well, we'll just go from the top. Meeting minutes is the next one, Brian, right?
I only got you three sets instead of the eight I was hoping for.
It's three, that's for next time.
So I got June thirty for you.
Oh, is that?
Meeting minutes, June thirtieth.
She have June thirty, July eleventh, and July thirty-first.
Make a motion, we accept minutes of June thirtieth as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes, July eleventh.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of July eleventh, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you.
And meeting minutes of July thirty-first.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of July thirty-first, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And we have a business license for, um, all in one track. Todd Chessey, is that right?
I believe that's how you'd pronounce it.
Okay. Uh, all in one track, thirty-five River Road, Irving. Or track inspection and railroad consultant. All paperwork is in order?
Correct.
Can make a motion, we accept the application for business license for Todd Chessey. For all in one track, thirty-five River Road, Irving.
And for this, it would have an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
For the next expiration date of, did you say December thirty-first?
Correct.
Of twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then we have the warrant for the twenty twenty state primary election.
Now, the business license is good to go, your accounts payable warrant, and then this warrant for the election that you're about to approve, um, they're all in your baskets, ready for signatures.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the warrant for twenty twenty state primary election.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any other business?
Oh.
We did have an executive session item. Um, it's, if I had to estimate, it's ten fifteen minutes, um, but it's not time sensitive, so. Uh, it's kind of up to you guys whether you want to wrap it up tonight or you want to postpone it till next meeting. I know we're we're a good few hours in.
Yeah, let's postpone.
Okay.
Okey dokey.
All right, we can do that. And if there's no other business? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
See Brian tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Night, everyone.
Good night.
Nice.